Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st, 2017 City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Chief, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Faria?
Here.
Johnson, Santos, Lewis, Silveira, Valalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Faria?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Faria, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. It includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. If you wish to speak at the public forum, when you please approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Bertha Faria, Los Vanos Chamber of Commerce. I have a couple of items on our upcoming calendar, and I would also like to comment on item 10 later in the agenda for tonight. The Milliken Museum will hold their annual Arbor Day breakfast at the Miller and Lux Building on Friday from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Come down and enjoy a delicious breakfast for $8. Registration for the second annual Hometown Throwdown BBQ Cook-Off sponsored by BBQ Pros has begun. Teams can pick up their competitor packets at 720 I Street for the Spring Fair Cook-Off on Sunday, May the 7th. Also, our local fabric and quilt shop, JMG Fabrics, will be participating in the 2017 Quilters' March Madness with a Shop Hop Challenge along with 11 other shops in our area. Mark your calendars for March 9th through the 12th, and visit www. quilters' march madness.net for more information and learn how you can win some great prizes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening.
My name's Adam Shasky. I'm with Shasky Farms. I know some of you went to school, some of you lived here years back, and I probably know a lot, and a lot of you know my family. And we're just here to support the possibility of having an event coming up this summer for Farmer's Market and kind of night out, like that.
Did you wish to speak at that item?
You know, later on, probably. What do you think? I don't know, would you want to do it now, or?
You can do it now if you have to leave, or you can wait till item?
Yeah, I can wait. That's fine.
Okay.
I drove over here, so I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Hello, I'm Joy Mendez. I'm part of the Los Vanos Chamber of Commerce, Vice President this year, and I would also like to speak on item number 10 for the upcoming proposal of the Farmer's Market.
Thank you. So, anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level, and we'll go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 203345 through 203533 in the amount of $806,706.46. Minutes for the February 15th, 2017 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5841, approving the first addendum to agreement for professional services between the City of Los Vanos and Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., related to the design of wastewater treatment plant, new headworks project, in the amount of $109,000. City Council Resolution Number 5842, authorizing the release of unclaimed checks pursuant to California Government Code Section 50050 and 50053 to the City of Los Vanos. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
I would approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 5843, adopting revised budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget as it pertains to the revenues and expenditures associated with the mid-year budget review. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we're going to go over the mid-year budget. The mid-year budget allows council to take a detailed look at where we are and allows staff to true-up any budgeted numbers for accounts that may be over or underperforming. And tonight, we're going to focus on the general fund and recommend several adjustments to both revenues and expenditures. We will touch on the other funds as well, but a little bit more focus on the general fund. So, let's just get right into it, starting with the revenues. Beginning with general fund revenues, sales tax revenues are collected on a monthly basis. The city first receives an estimate of these taxes, and then they true-up on a quarterly basis. The city so far has received payments through October, and that's why we're only at the 33%. So, so far, we're actually right on track with what we had predicted. The property tax and the property tax in lieu, those generally don't come until January and February, respectively. This year, we did receive them in January, and that's why the stars are there. So, we did kind of just include them so you could see where we're at. Property taxes came in a little bit higher than expected, and we are excited about that, and we will be adjusting revenues later on in the presentation. You can see that we've increased them by about $150,000 for the year. And then, property tax in lieu, that came in in February, but we're right on track with that at about 51%. Permits, this is where we're seeing the largest fluctuation. The permits are obviously required for to build, repair, demolish any structures. And from July 1st to December 31st of this year, 758 permits have been pulled. 334 of those permits were for single-family housing. And so, we do have a very large increase there, and we will be increasing or asking for the revenues to be increased as well. Franchise fees are currently at 13%. We get Comcast and Pacific Bell on a regular basis, but we don't get PG&E until April. They pay annually, so that's always a little bit lower at this time, but it'll catch up in April, and we're right on track for where we should be. Transient occupancy tax, that's our hotel tax. That's 10% of hotel lodging fees. Those are also collected on a quarterly basis, and 36% represents the first quarter. So, again, we're right on track with that revenue as well. Moving on to building plan check fees, again, this is another one that is high for mid-year. Obviously, we're at 92%. Building activity has increased even larger than we actually expected it to, but that is due to developers pulling permits in November and December in anticipation of new building code regulations. So, we had overabundance of permits in that case, so we don't anticipate that it'll continue on for that year, even though we do expect for it to increase. We are expecting revenues to increase by approximately $108,000 over the budgeted amount. Business licenses, those are at 74%. Those are collected monthly, with the majority of those being collected or built out in December. We actually built out a little bit early this year, and the ones we normally build in December, we built in November due to staffing, and so, we're a little bit higher than expected, but we should finish the end of the year out at what we anticipated. Documentary stamps tax fee is received for the transfer of property. This increase is a result of the high property sales for both the new houses and resale of current houses. Recreation programs are only at 37% for the year. This is not uncommon, as most of the programs take place in spring or summertime. So, again, those are right on track. And then, other revenues, just kind of everything grouped together, that does include some of the other planning permits, and so, we're at 55% there. That does look on track. There are a couple of things that will be increasing or trueing up, and those have to do with strike team fires, planning fees, and some miscellaneous revenues that came in that we didn't expect, so we'll be trueing up those numbers as well. I just wanted to show you a little bit in the change of revenue from last year to this year, so we could see where the increases are. And as you can see, grouping all taxes together, we have an increase of about 8%. We went from 4.2 million to 4.5 million this year. Licenses and permits, obviously, extremely large increase, we're over 108%, and so, that's very positive. Shared revenues, we're at 84%, and this has a lot to do with, or negative 84%, this has a lot to do with strike team. It's not normally stuff that we anticipate, and so, this is all kind of grouped in there, and so, it tends to fluctuate a lot, but once things get trueed up, we'll be right on track. Charges for services are at 21%. Fines and fees, an 18% increase there. And then, interest income, we're down a little bit right now. Hopefully, we'll pick that up by the end of the year, and then, all other revenues are a little bit lower as well. Okay, general fund?
Sonia?
Yes?
The money for the building permits, is that money collected to date? Because sometimes, the developers don't pay until the house is finished?
Oh, no. These are things that are collected.
It's already collected?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So, general fund expenditures, I'm going to go over by each department, and starting with administration, we're at about 45%. Overall, all the departments are on track for the year. We do have a couple increases that we're asking for, either to fix things on somebody's infrastructure or to possibly add cars. But as you can see, everybody's pretty steady. Community development is a little bit lower than expected, but that's just waiting for buildings or projects that we budgeted that haven't been completed yet. So, everybody's pretty much on track. Code enforcement's a little bit lower, but that's due to employee concerns and swapping out people, and so, that's a little bit lower than expected, but still on track. And then, building, of course, is high, but that goes with the revenues. So, we pay CSG out of the building department, and so, we'll be asking for an increase to offset the revenues that are coming in. Moving on to recreation. Recreation, community center, those are all pretty much on track. The transfers out and the contingency is the only thing so far that has a zero balance, but as you know, that's the 50,000 set aside we put in case of emergency, and we haven't used it to date. I think we might have used it now, but as of December 31st, we hadn't expended any of those funds at this point in time. Transfers out include the fire and police CFDs as well as the COPS grant, and this is basically money that the general fund subsidizes. I hate to use that word, but it's what that fund can't afford, so we are paying $170,000 anticipated. We've done 50% so far to date. So, any questions on expenditures? So, this is taking a look at the general fund adjustments, and if you look, I added an amended Exhibit A to on your desk. The highlighted blue area is the only thing that got changed, and it's actually changing from two vehicles for police to three vehicles. So, if this does get approved tonight, I would ask that you did it with the correction of using amended Exhibit A instead of Exhibit A. But that list details out what the budget adjustments are that we're about to talk about. So, I just give a group of what the revenues are. You can see them itemized. We did increase property taxes by 125,000. Another big increase was the permits. We are asking to increase revenues by 225,000. Firefighter reimbursements, that's basically a true-up, and that's 55,958. Building plan check fees, we would like to increase by 108,000. General plan maintenance fee, 32,000. Other fees, 3,000. Tree inspection, 6,200. Interest earnings, 32,000. There are two decreases to revenues that you'll notice on?
Sure, wait, wait, wait.
From the adjustment?
Wait, wait, Ms. Silveira. Okay.
It was way too much information for a slide. There's these, this is when I added.
My mistake. I was looking at my?
And I'm not listing every single one, just the larger amounts. There are two decreases to revenues, and they're both having to do with the community center, one's for the grand room and one's for the meeting room. And after much discussion, we just felt like we weren't going to meet those. We did have a couple people that used to rent it, and they don't now. So, we did back that down a little bit, one for 9,500 and one for 3,000, but we want it to be, you know, closer to what we actually anticipate coming in. And then, overall, 43,500 for miscellaneous revenues, and I think there's a couple other down there, but I need a ruler. Refunds and then, sales of fixed assets. So, sales of fixed assets is another true-up. It was something that we didn't anticipate selling the assets, and that's an increase of almost $17,000. So, those all grouped together, a total increase in revenues would be $820,668,000 for the year. Expenditure increases are broken down by department, and on the same form, they're itemized in this slide presentation, they're just grouped together by department. So, for administration, we're asking for an increase of 8,900. This has to do with insurance, supplies, and professional services, so some changes that we made to contracts, we're taking those into account. Community and economic development, $2,000, and those are for professional services, the same contracts, which, when I say professional services, they're actually all referring to contract increases. Police, this is a larger one. It's for 139,175. There are three vehicles that we've been putting off, replacing for quite some time, and we just felt that now was a good time to do it. They're in at $40,000 each. Professional service increase, and then, trueing up some insurance cost. Fire is for strike teams, so if you remember correctly, you'll see it through other funds throughout the presentation, but anytime we go out on strike team, we bring in the revenue reimbursement, which is one of the increases to revenue as well. And then, we try to add the expenditure in there, so they're not using their money for the strike team. It's an additional cost since we're being reimbursed for it. So, this is trueing up the strike team. It's also for building improvements, so they are going to be installing garage store openers to Station 1 and Station 2 to fix the old ones that they have.
Okay. I have a couple of questions here.
Okay.
Mrs. Lewis, do you have a question?
She's going to give to mine.
Oh, okay.
Let her finish this block, and then I'll ask.
Oh, okay. Mr. Silveira?
Strike team, so, when will we figure out the dollar amount that'll be put back into what I like to call the equipment replacement part of it?
So, we keep a running total, but that will come to council probably as an information item only, because the city manager does have the authority to assign the funds. So, we'll do it in a memo format at the end of the year. So, it'll be probably the last meeting, either the first or second meeting in June, just to make sure that everything came in, because we put it in there as revenue, we put it in there as accounts receivable. If we haven't received it from them yet, we won't assign it. It won't be till we actually receive the funds.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
I knew that question was coming.
I did, too. I brought my little charts, in case.
Okay.
Okay, so, strike team, building improvements, and then, professional services. Building, the increase of 181,000 is for CSG. So, we pay CSG a portion of the revenues. So, they go out and they do the contracting, depending on what it is, it's 60%, some are 100%. So, it comes out to, on average, about 80%. So, it's really good. The revenues go up, but so does the expenditure to offset it. They don't get 100% of it, but that's how it ties in there. That's why the amount, the increase is so large.
Sonia, I have just a quick question.
And then, yes.
So, and I understand that, it's just, I don't know if this is the proper time, but I'm going to bring it up, because I thought of it, is, as we proceed down this road, when does staff start looking at, when does it become cost-effective for us to hire our own employees to do it? Because we pay CSG 60%, in some cases even higher, of the permit fee to do the inspections, and I get it, they're a very valuable asset, especially when we weren't doing anything. And then, I know that as things pick up, they have staff that they can bring in, and, you know, I remember seeing one person down here the other day when I was in there, they had like three or four people. But in your opinion, at what point do we start saying that we have enough work, that we have our own person, maybe not that does all of it, but picks up some of this, and we're paying, that 60% is going to pay a person that we can employ here?
In my opinion, never. And I say that because they're on an as-needed basis. We pay them zero if zero happens. And so, to me, it's the best-case scenario, because there's too many fluctuations in the building department, and if we hire a bunch of people and lay them off, and then hire them and lay them off. If we have CSG, they're moving their people around where they're needed. You know, they have that responsibility, and the cost to us is minimal. It's always going to be cheaper to contract that service out for us than it is for us to hire in-house.
So, then, when we look at that contract with them, do we think about things like, you know, volume, the more work you do, the more money that you're going to make? So, maybe that percentage goes down to like 55% instead of 60%?
We haven't done it that, like that, but the last time that we asked PD, their percentage actually did drop down by 10%. So, we are paying them less now than we had before.
On a percentage basis?
But it's not, yeah, it's not built into the contract that, you know, the more work they get or anything like that, where it goes down. It just was built out differently this time around.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see. So, building, also increased salaries and benefits, and that was to pay for a cash-out on a contract. Streets, the negative number is 13,500. It's because we charge out for streets. So, streets gets charged out to gas tax. This was for an adjustment that we made a couple months ago for an employee, and when we did the adjustments, we didn't do the charge out. So, this is just trueing that up, fixing that correction. Recreation, an increase of $1,700, and that's to pay for water. And then, transfers out, this again is for code enforcement vehicle that we had budgeted for in this current budget, and AV paid for a portion of that, so we're just getting that in the correct fund. Deborah, did you have a question about this slide?
It was on?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay.
Thank you. It was on the code enforcement, so you justified it as a vehicle, a new vehicle that was purchased.
Yeah, it was a vehicle that we had previously budgeted, and we're just putting things in the right account. It's nothing new.
And then, the other one I had was under police on this white sheet, the amendment. You had 120,000 for three new vehicles, and it's 139,175. But that, is that 120 inclusive of this?
Yes. If you look at all the, on this sheet with the blue line, if you look at all the ones that are 100-421, those are PD. So, that'll include the 120,000 and all the items above it, which are just, there is a badge maker in there, ones for a police grant that we, we did include the revenue, and so, we're just including the expenditure so we could spend out that grant money. And then, I think that we also had some contract fees in there as well.
All right, thank you.
Approval of the general fund adjustments would increase adopted expenditures by $407,585, bringing the year's budgeted expenditures to $15,690,000. And with the newly anticipated increase in revenues, we do expect to have a small deficit for the year, but as you remember, we did a bunch of one-time projects at the beginning of the year, and that was over a little bit, over a million dollars. If we back that out, then we would not have a deficit. So, we're still in a really good place with the general fund. The operating reserve, so our beginning fund balance was 9.6 million at the beginning of the year. The revenues, which include the adjustments that we just went over, would be 14.6 million. The operational expenditures, including the adjustments, would be 15.5 million. The transfers to CFDs and the COPS grant are 170,000, which brings our estimated ending fund balance to 8.6 million. And this, of course, is our unreserved fund balance. We do, if you remember, have a set aside of a reserve fund balance, and there's approximately 1.8 million left in that. 1 million was for PD capital, and then, 500,000 was for general capital, and the remainder of it is set aside that we had taken for RDA when RDA left and gave it to community and economic development, and our balance is about 398,000 in that account. So, if there's no questions about the general fund, I'd like to move on. You guys have anything? Okay. So, Measure P and K, I called it?
I'm sorry, one question.
Okay, sorry.
I do apologize. And I might be misunderstanding, but I know you said there were talks about the decrease in the rec center funds, but my concern is for the, will that affect the employees over there with that?
No, the, the adjustments are minimal. We anticipated to just de-delect community center grand room and the meeting rooms. It's just our rentals, so it's not large enough to affect any of the employees at that, at that center. Okay. So, Measure P and K, I did say K even though we don't really have K, which is always good news, but I put it up there anyway, because technically, it exists. The adjustments that we're making to Measure P tonight include fire, and it all has to do with the strike team. So, we want to increase revenues by 34,000 and increase expenditures by 23,990, and that's for overtime and benefits. Measure P for both police and fire, so just wanted to go over the fund balance where we were last year. We ended 1516 at 1.6 million. Revenues for PD and fire are generally the same. Fire's a little bit... Fire's a little bit higher because of the strike team. But one-point-one for police, one-point-one-eight for fire. Expenditures for police is six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty, and for fire is one-point-one-eight-four. So not quite deficit spending for fire, but relatively close, but that has to do with the fueling station that just was installed at fire station one. We are expecting to collect the total of one-point-one-five-million combined for police and fire. And other than that, the fire revenues will increase by thirty-four thousand, and the expenditures, if approved tonight, will increase by twenty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety. Just as a reminder, there are no more employees in measure K. There are measure, there are measure P employees, but that was how it was built. And for police, there's three police officers, one CSO, one crime analyst, and half an admin clerk. And for fire, there's three engineers, four firefighters, and a half admin clerk. And those will always be in there. In fact, the, one of the police officers just knew it was, how it was built into the ordinance. So moving on to landscape and lighting districts. There are eighteen districts within the city.
So on the ending fund balance on police, it's quite a bit larger, right?
Yes.
And, and the reason for that is?
So it's, there's several reasons for that, actually. We pulled people, we put people in there first, and we pulled people out of there first. There are less people being paid out of there, and that was something that was chosen back when they, when they did the measure in the first place. So police has a total of five-and-a-half employees coming out, and fire has a total of seven-and-a-half employees coming out. And three of those employees are engineers at a higher rate, obviously. So that's one of the reasons. And then another reason is Tim is using the money for that fueling station, the concrete and things like that. So it's going to what it should be going to. So that's a positive note as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, landscape and lighting districts. There are eighteen districts within the city. Five districts are currently operating with a negative fund balance. Fifty-one percent or six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand of the maintenance budget is for areas not located in any of these eighteen districts. That means that the six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars is a general fund expense. New development in some of these areas will help reduce or eliminate the deficit. So tonight, there are eight districts that we're asking for increases, and all these increases are for electricity and gas or streetlight maintenance. And that's because, a couple things. So the electricity and gas and the streetlight maintenance, we, one, we did a project within the finance department, and we went through, well, we worked with Public Works, of course, but we went through all the PG&E bills just to reconcile, to make sure that all the light poles were being paid out of the correct district. And of course, we found several that weren't. So we did this after we budgeted it, and so we're just kind of correcting them now, making sure that we have enough money in those accounts to cover what we did find. And then some of it has to do with the, the retrofit and the bills, and then some of the streetlight maintenance, the larger two items, Meadowlands where you see the eight-thousand-dollar increase, and Stone Creek where you see the eighteen-thousand-five-hundred had to do with repair and replacement of streetlights, poles, and heads that were unanticipated at the beginning of the budget year. The districts with a deficit fund balance are Los Banas Gardens, Meadowlands, Magnolia Grove, Stone Creek, and Talbot Park. And they range anywhere from twenty-five-thousand to three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand deficit. Enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and solid waste. The water and wastewater revenues are slightly higher than expected, but these increases are also due in part to the planning department having permits being pulled, and new houses being built, and it has to do with connection fees in it. Overall expenditures are lower than anticipated, but this is due to capital outlay projects that we've budgeted and have either not started or not completed. So it's not way out of, I mean, it appears to be pretty low, but it's just projects that will be completed towards the end of the year. So we do have some adjustments in the enterprise funds for tonight, and we have them in both revenue and expenditures. In the water revenue account, we're increasing it by three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for connection fees and sale of assets. The expenditures, we're asking for a nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six-dollar increase. This is to correct office supplies, insurance, and professional services. If you remember, admin, the admin department gets charged twenty-five percent to the general fund, twenty-five percent to water, twenty-five percent to wastewater, and twenty-five percent to solid waste. So if there's something that affects the admin department in the general fund, it's also going to affect the enterprise funds as well. And that's what the office supplies and professional services are. So the wastewater revenues, the increase would be about three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand. And again, this is an increase to connection fees and a slight decrease to farming income. They just changed the crop out there, and then they lost some of the crop due to mold, so they're, they're anticipating to come in a lot lower than had we originally anticipated. Airport revenues, we're expecting to increase by four-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one. This is a little boost in property taxes and tie-down fees. And then solid waste revenues, this is an increase to sale of assets and roll-off fees for twenty-one-thousand, and an increase in expenditures for the same office supplies, insurance, and professional services. Other adjustments to expenditures, now I didn't include them all, I just took, picked out some larger ones, but if you do go back to that schedule, you'll see them all. And when I say other, this is anything that's special revenue. I'm just kind of grouping them all together because there are a lot of minor ones in there, but nothing that really needs to be pointed out. But I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any specific to the amendment. So fire, measure P, we're increasing for twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety, overtime and benefits. That also has to do with the strike team. Regency park fees, Meadowland fees, and Stone Creek, they are, are all reimbursements to developers. So they put a park in for us back in the day, permits are now being pulled in that area, and we're reimbursing the developers. Those are all at various costs. And then fire CFDs, again, for strike team, overtime and benefits. And then there's a bunch of smaller, minor increases on that schedule. So if nobody has any questions regarding the adjustments or the recommended adjustments, I wanted to talk a little bit about what's gonna happen this upcoming budget year and where we are pretty much with PERS rates. So we were, we received a letter in December of 2016 that the CalPERS board approved lowering the discount rate. You think that would be good, but it's not. The discount rate is also the long-term rate of return. So if that goes down, then that means we're paying more, basically. They want to lower the rate from seven-point-five percent to seven percent over the next three years. These would be fiscal years eighteen, nineteen, nineteen-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one. They're doing it by, it would be seven-point-seven-five the first year, seven-point-two-five the second year, and seven percent the third year. Lowering the discount rate means plans will increase in both the normal cost and the accrued liabilities. These increases will result in higher required employer contributions. So looking at this chart, which is kind of hard to see, PERS actually sent us adjustments. And I, what I did here was I just picked out one tier because we do have several different tiers. We have tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then Peppera. And they're all different, but tier one, most of our employees are on tier one for both miscellaneous and for safety, and it is the highest increase, so that's why I use this as an example. And also, they gave us, it will increase by a low rate to a high rate. I took the high rate. I'm trying to just give you worst-case scenario here. So in eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, they're saying miscellaneous tier-one rates would increase three-point-seven-five percent. So it goes from thirty-one-point-nine-seven percent up to thirty-five-point-seven-two. The next year would be a seven-point-five percent increase, and it would go up to thirty-nine-point-four-seven. So the seven-point-five increase is not built off of the, the prior year, but off of the static year, which would be the seventeen-eighteen year. So it's seven-point-five percent plus the thirty-one-point-nine-seven. And the same goes for the twenty-twenty-one year. Will be all the way up at forty-nine-point-nine-seven percent. And looking down below, that at safety, the increases go from forty-four percent to forty-eight percent to fifty-two percent to sixty-four percent. So I just wanted to play this out, what does this mean? If an employee makes fifty-thousand dollars a year, the, the bottom chart shows what, how that would apply. So first one is miscellaneous tier-one. That increase would mean our cost would be for just one employee out fifty-thousand, almost sixteen-thousand dollars for just PERS. That's not taking any other benefits into account. So from seventeen-eighteen all the way to twenty-twenty-one, our rate would increase from sixteen-thousand to twenty-five-thousand for miscellaneous employees. And for safety, it would go from twenty-two-thousand to thirty-two-thousand for tier-one safety employees, which obviously is a very large increase and something that we need to be looking at and taking into consideration. There are several meetings going on right now, people scrambling because they have made a couple of announcements that they expect the rates to be even lower than the seven percent that they anticipated. We don't know how this is going to affect us yet. Right now, we're basing everything off of these numbers. Moving forward with the budget, that means we're gonna be very cautious about employee costs, obviously.
Does it have anything to do with the governor miscalculating?
Everything has to do with the governor. A lot of it is-
He was off by one-point-five billion dollars.
Yeah, and they're making corrections to their budget, but a lot of it is just the way that CalPERS is run, and, you know, they're always changing the rates, and we're always making up the cost. The cities are always making up the cost for the rates.
And one of the corrections I heard that they wanted to, the governor wanted to raise gas and vehicle license fees.
Well, that won't help us here.
It won't help us here, but, yeah, but-
It won't, it won't help in these employer rates.
Yeah, someone has to pay for his mistake.
Some of these mistakes want to place their rates sooner than since-
I'm, I'm not sure about that. We, I think the only reason they have it is because we received the actual rates for seventeen-eighteen, and they probably don't wanna redo all that, so.
Talk really, really quickly, so, other than budgeting more money, right? I mean, obviously, if you look at, by that, by those examples you gave, it's a nine-thousand-dollar per employee increase at fifty-thousand on, on miscellaneous, and then it's a ten-thousand-dollar increase on safety. So other than just preparing and budgeting more money, is there anything that we can do to, to put ourselves into a better position?
The last time that we went through this, it's not as bad as the last time, is all I can say, because we had a housing market crash, and we had things like this happening. But we're gonna have to start making cutbacks, we have to be very cautious. Right now, we've been kind of happy and spending a lot of money, but we don't exactly know how bad this is going to hit us. So what I would say right now is just to kind of reduce our spending, be very cautious, don't add new employees unless it's something that we completely cannot avoid.
Okay. It's just, it's frustrating because the, these people in all their infinite wisdom that are, that are these board members of PERS, and I hear the stories of, because of something, some polit, to make a political statement, they won't, they, they divest from a certain company. They, they no longer deal with oil companies because it's politically correct, they don't wanna, you know, ruin the environment. But yet, the taxpayer's the one that suffers. So, so with the boom in the stock market that we've had since the election, we're not even getting to take full advantage of that, at least PERS is not, because they chose to divest themselves from certain companies that are the ones that are making the biggest gains, right? So it just, and then here we are, we're, we're stuck with having to make the hard decisions over here, that we can't hire new employees, because it's, it's just crazy. You're looking at, that's what I'm looking, it's, whatever you're paying them, it's gonna be an additional fifty percent of that just in, in, in the retirement?
Well, as, as you can see, yeah, fifty percent in just PERS retirement. That doesn't count health insurance, that doesn't count taxes that we pay anything else.
And that's the employer's portion.
That's the employer's portion, and then you add the employees.
Excuse me, let me, go ahead.
Because the employees' percent, the police is gonna be up to twelve percent.
Yeah. So, yes, just fifty percent, going out to twenty-twenty-one for both miscellaneous and safety, fifty percent of just their purse. You know, we have to add in all the other payroll taxes that go with that, and all the other benefits that go with that as well, sixty-four percent for safety. There have been several cities that have already put hiring freezes in place. And so I believe we read, City of Modesto this morning was one of those cities. They're anticipating a very large recession. I anticipate the same thing, and, and our sales tax, community services that come have, have been telling that, us that as well. The difference here is that we shouldn't see the housing market crash the way that it did before. It didn't build up to the extreme that it did before. We're slow and steady, we should not see the same crash, so we have that as a plus. Even if the rest of it goes down, yeah, then we have that little bit. So it's not as bad, but we just need to, it's out there, and I'm sure you guys have heard a lot of whispering, and that's why I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention now, just so you know, you know, we're, we're researching it, we're looking into it, and we're trying to find the best path possible for us. You know, the biggest increase is gonna be fifteen, or eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, but we want to be ready when we get there, so.
See, I think what upsets me the most is, you know, we have to, we have to mention the word cutbacks, and, and the state talks about raising taxes, gas tax, or whatever they wanna raise in order to, to backfund their mistakes. So it, and that's not something that's gonna benefit us.
Yeah, and we actually did decrease the gas tax this time around minimally, but they are talking about an increase for the coming fiscal year.
I'll, I'll tell you what, let me, let me do this, let me finish the presentation, and I'll let you ask a question. Okay?
So two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget cycle. We're working on a capital improvement plan. The plan is a five-year plan. It will include current infrastructure, so hopefully an idea for everything that we have here and when it needs to be replaced. It will also include new or planned infrastructure. That's very tiny, you can't really see it. It will include a fleet replacement strategy, and it will have potential funding sources. All these items will be listed on there, doesn't mean that there's a funding source for them. So it might just be City Hall with zero, 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 zero for the next five years because there's not one in the works. So you might see a lot of zeros in it, but it's just to give us an idea of what needs to be replaced and, and work on a way to, to fund those items. Cost of living increases will be built into this budget for agreements through fiscal year twenty-eighteen, and those are for police officers, police sergeants, fire, dispatch and CSOs. And of course, annual merit increases are still in effect. So anybody who's eligible for one of those, that will be budgeted in as well. Increases to revenues, we will remain conservative. I did read something from the Department of Finance where they are recommending to all county assessors' offices that they do not increase the property taxes by more than two percent. So I don't know what rationale that was on, there wasn't a lot of detail, but that's the number I got, so we'll see how our county assessor decides to deal with that. Sales tax increases, we are having a couple new businesses out here. We will meet with community services before the budget, so we'll get an idea from them. And then permits, talking to the planning department, we do believe that permits will be consistent with this current year. Increases to expenditures, of course, like I said, CIP, so we'll assess any of those projects that are on there, any of the fleet that's on there, and see if it's something that we can manage to sneak in this budget, probably not to the same extent that we did last year when we did one time, one million, one-time expenditures. And then anticipate status quo for supplies and services and personal costs. And that's, of course, just being conservative due to what might happen with PERS. And other than that, I'm available for questions if anybody has any.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis, do you have a question?
Um, yes. Sonia, does PERS keep separate accounts for each municipality as to what they have in their accounts, or does this money just go into a big general pot, and when they're in a deficit, then everybody pays the consequences?
It just goes into one big general pot.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Mr. Freya?
Just a quick comment that, wanna commend finance on that nine-million-dollar reserve because it's, we may need it.
Spirit?
Really, too, is if employees are gonna have to put up more out of their check, they're actually, their, their take-home is gonna be a cut. So their real income is gonna be a cut, so we don't wanna see that happen, so. Good work on, on fiscal, prudent fiscal management, we appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Okay. I had a person who would like to ask a question. Would you, you need to come up here.
My name's Colin Crawford from Los Banas. And this, what I wanna ask you is this twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget for CalPERS, is that- CalPERS, is that set in stone or is if the economy gets better like Mr. Soler I was saying about investments in the CalPERS, can that change?
Yes, it can change. And these, like I stated, these are the high estimates, so they actually gave us a range, I believe, for the eighteen nineteen year, I think it was two point two five, two three, up to, from two point two five to three point seven five. And there was a range for each of the different items that you see there. So, I went with the highest amount, just worst-case scenario, so we're prepared. But yes, it can change.
It can change. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
We have to prepare for the most that could come out and then back off from there, hopefully. Okay. Any other questions from council? Comments? I just want to also thank you personally because that, like Mr. Freya said, that reserve is going to come in handy. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, yes, we're going to, amendment, your, your motion, Mr. Freya, should include amended Exhibit A. Mr. Freya?
All right, then I will move to adopt City Council Resolution Number five eight four three, including the amendment to Exhibit A as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis to approve City Council Resolution Number five eight four three, including the amendment to Exhibit A. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item eight, consideration of approval to release a request for proposals, RFP, to seek qualified consulting firms to perform a development impact fee nexus study. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams again.
So, I'm going to talk about the last item a little bit because I forgot to thank my staff and Kim's here tonight, Rosemary and Sarah, who's new to the staff and this was her first time working on mid-year budget and they put a lot of hard work into this for me, so I really appreciate it and I just wanted to thank them. So, moving on to impact fees, tonight's staff is seeking direction on whether or not to release an RFP for a development impact fee nexus study. The last study was adopted by council in two thousand and six. Goodwin Consulting Group performed that study. The rates were last increased in two thousand and nine. From two thousand and six, we did have three years of CPI increases and then after that is kind of when the economy tanked and we stopped increasing the rates. These fees are typically justified as an offset for future impact that development will have on new and existing infrastructures. So, basically, they, you know, see what we might need, whether it's a new fire station, a police station, if it's going to require more fire engines, more city vehicles, things like that. They look at the study, they see how much it'll cost and then that portion of that gets charged to new developments. Traditionally, the study has been broken down into three different groups. We don't group all the impact fees together and that's because of the types of fees they are and some of them, the difficulty of the fees. So, generally, we would group things like police, fire, city hall, community service, those types of impact fees together. A second study would be water, wastewater, storm drain. And then finally, traffic would be all by itself because of the complexities of traffic. So, what we're looking at doing tonight is asking the council, is this something that you wanted to look at? If you do, I'm anticipating that it'll probably be two RFPs, one RFP for the general fees and for the water, wastewater and storm drain. It would be two studies but one RFP and then a completely separate, separate RFP for traffic. So, what we're really just asking for is how does the council feel about this? Do you want us to spend the time putting together these RFPs, putting together the RFPs and having the study completed in no way states that the funds or that the impact fees will be increased? It could say your impact fees are at the right place, it could say your impact fees are too high, they're too low, it could come out with obviously three different results. So, it does not mean that by doing the study that we have to increase the rates. It's just, we haven't done it in some time, two thousand and six, it's eleven years later. It's really something that we should take a look at, make sure that we're charging the developers the right amount when they come in. So, pretty simple. Obviously, if the fee does get done, they'll go into a lot more information and let you know where the fees are at now, if they should be increased, why, if not, why. Just looking for direction.
Mrs. Soler?
I've got a couple of comments on this item. Number one, I asked the question is, what is driving it other than it's been since two thousand and six, since we've done it? Are we seeing from staff, department heads, are they, are they saying that we feel like we're in a position that the fees that we're collecting aren't enough? So, I want to know what's driving this. And then, a second question that I have is, is I seen in the staff report that it says it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. That hundred thousand dollars, now you said that that would be broken down into probably two or three different studies?
Studies, yes.
That hundred thousand dollars would be to cover all three of those, not a hundred per?
That is my estimate, I did get an estimate from a consultant and it was fifty thousand for the general impact fees and the water, wastewater, storm drain. And so, from there, I anticipated it would probably be another fifty thousand for the traffic.
Okay, and then it just, yeah, I really, with this item, I've been talking with the city manager a few times about it, it just worries me as like, maybe this is not the right way to look at it, but I can only go by what I think. And what I think is, is, you know, if we don't, if we don't see that there is a need, like if nobody's coming and saying, hey, we need to really look at these because we don't think we're collecting enough, I'm of the mindset, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Because what I worry about is, things are different today than they were back in two thousand and six. We went through the big great recession and what I worry about is, what happens if the fees come back lower? And I guess that one would say we have a responsibility to, if they come back lower, to lower those fees. It's just, it's not a reason not to do it, but I do, like, all these things are going through my mind and then if it starts bringing up questions to fees that were collected, they all went to the proper place, what happens if it's found out that they didn't go to the proper place? Where does that, where do we make up that? Where does that money come from? I don't know, I don't know the answer to these questions, but these are all things that I think that we should consider. I don't have a problem with voting to send it out, you know, put an RFP together, but when we make that decision to go down that road, it's a hundred thousand dollars when we just talked about possible increases coming down the road. I just, I worry about, we do have a healthy reserve, but that was from many years of grinding our teeth up here and holding on and just trying to keep every penny that we can, waiting for the next storm to hit. So, those are all my concerns with it.
Okay, let me see if I can answer some of those questions. So, I think one of the driving forces for this is actually the CIP. We're putting together a list of the infrastructure, whether it's replacement completely or repair current infrastructure, whether it's adding on to, say, city hall to expand it because we're running out of room here. So, the CIP is a driving force for this meeting to be increased. I think if you go around city, the city and see the different infrastructures that the city has, much of them are in either need of repair or PD, for instance, total replacement, fire station, talking about how they always need a third station, things like that. And that's due to the impact on the city, that's due to more people coming in, more houses being here.
So, then, and one of my comments to that is, is if we do go down that road, it's the attention to detail of, okay, I get it, new development should pay its way and pay for their impact, but when you talk about, you know, PD needs to be completely replaced, well, not all of that replacement should be on the backs of new development, there's a certain part of it, I would think.
That's correct.
So, they will get into the detail on all those things to say, I'll make up a number, let's say, you know, sixty percent of this impact is already here, that was going to happen anyways, the other forty percent because of the added use, the added people in town would go toward, you know, would be passed on to the impact fee.
Yes, they pay for their impact, for new impact, not for what was happening. And that's, that's why it's one report that we can't do in-house, it's very detailed, there's a lot of information that goes into it and they do break it out in that manner. No, you need a new police station irregardless of five hundred thousand more houses being built in this area, you know, you need that. So, is that impact all to us? Are you going to make it maybe twice as big because you have more people coming in? So, they'll take, okay, maybe it only needs to be twenty thousand square feet, but because we knew people are coming in, we should make it forty thousand square feet. So, they would pay for the twenty thousand additional square feet, not the original twenty thousand square feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so, then another thing that holds us accountable is we do AB sixteen hundred and we are required to do that. What that says is, all the fees that we have, collect it. We do it every year, you're required to do it every five years, but we do it every year just to keep it up to date. You have to have a plan to spend those fees. If you don't have a feasible plan or you have a zero plan at all, you have to give the fees back to the developer. So, there's always a plan in there, it takes into account how much it costs to do something. If we're building up the fund, it's for a purpose, obviously, you know, if the police station is going to cost thirty million dollars to build and there's only a million dollars in there, we're saving that money. So, we just have to show, hey, we haven't spent it yet because we need this much more. So, there is a report that holds us accountable, that makes sure that we're using the funds correctly and that we're using the funds, basically.
Okay.
I forgot, I know you had one more question.
No, it was, most of it was just comments, just my thought process on it, so thank you for answering this.
Mrs. Santos?
I know you said that our last development study had been done in two thousand and six.
Yes.
How often are these normally done or would have been done? Or is it just based off of the activity of the development here in town?
Um, I actually don't know. I think that they're probably done every five years, but with that, it's, there's a CPI increase built in. And so, as long as you're doing your CPI increase, then you're not too bad off, but obviously, we stopped that back in two thousand and nine. Am I wrong about the five years? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All right.
Oh, I, you know what, I remembered what I was going to say, Scott, I'm sorry. The hundred thousand dollars is not general fund expense, that actually is paid out of the impact fee accounts. So, in the general impact fee accounts, there is an admin, city hall admin account, that will pay for all police, fire, community center, all those general ones, that'll pay for that. Water, wastewater, storm drain, pay for themselves and then traffic will also pay for itself out of the impact fee accounts. So, it will not impact our general fund.
So, this motion is to go out for the RFP?
Yeah, it's just direction.
And then, and then if we give you direction, then you'll go out for an RFP and then that'll come back to us again?
Yes, to award the contract. We will go through all the, do all the work, figure out who we pick and we'll bring it back to council to award the contract. You have the choice at that time to forward or not.
And what we're going to get for our money.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Ms. Freya?
Eleven years is a long time, I think it's time to take a look at this again. See, that was before I took office and the mayor took office, so it's been a while. Yeah, it may come back, say, we're collecting too much, but I doubt it. So, I would, I would move to give staff direction to release a request for proposals to seek qualified consulting firms to perform a development impact fee nexus study.
That was second. Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to consider, consideration of approval of release of requests for proposals, RFP, seek qualified consultants, firms to perform a development impact fee study. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. We don't want to hear that word, refund. All right. Item nine, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number five eight four four, adopting the City of Los Banos speed cushion policy and procedure. Chief Braisi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, glad to see you all tonight. Have an interesting topic for you in regards to traffic calming efforts in the City of Los Banos by way of a request for speed cushion policy and procedure, so I'll go ahead and get started. This idea has been a concept of ours for a number of months, brought on by requests from our local residents. And speed cushions are used as a traffic calming device and amongst some of the other things that we've done. So, what we're asking for tonight is the culmination of several months' worth of work in a request to approve the City of Los Banos speed cushions policy and procedure that you all should have in your agenda packet. Just a little bit of background, one of the primary functions at the police department is to monitor and provide a safe driving experience on city roadways. Traffic complaints such as excessive speed on a local roadways are a commonly reported concern from residents of our community. Probably the top concern when you speak about all the different topics that the police department deals with, traffic complaints are number one. Currently, we utilize a variety of measures designed to modify driving behavior, to make people obey the law. Those include targeted zero tolerance traffic enforcement operations, we just completed one the month of February, routine traffic enforcement by patrol personnel. Again, we're trying to modify and adjust driving behavior. When you see a cop behind you, you see lights, someone else being stopped, it has an influence, has an effect on your driving, has an effect on my driving when I see a police officer behind me. We like the use of the solar-powered radar speed signs that you see throughout town, they're intended to provide immediate feedback to the driver to let them know whether or not they're within a range of, a reasonable range of speed in that, on that street. And the last one is our public outreach efforts designed to remind drivers of the dangers of poor driving behavior. So, what are speed cushions? So, I'm going to tell you that over the past several months, we've talked about speed lumps, speed bumps, speed humps, traffic tables, and there's one or two others that we've talked about, but in the end, with the cooperation of all the department heads here, primarily Mark and Tim, we came to the conclusion that speed cushions are the best fit for our community. So, speed cushions are a series of raised bumps, generally six feet in width, seven feet in length, three inches tall at their midpoint, that are placed across the traveled portion of the roadway. And I'll show you kind of a picture of it at the end of the presentation. Speed cushions are designed to slow passenger vehicle traffic while minimizing the delay to larger emergency vehicles responding to an emergency. So, the idea behind cushions as opposed to a speed bump or a speed hump, speed bumps go from basically curb to curb and they are one large device that are usually designed of asphalt that go across the entire roadway. Emergency vehicles, fire trucks, police cars have to slow down. Speed cushions are just that, they're little pillows, two or three of them, that are placed across the traveled portion of the roadway, with the center one being a little bit more narrow than the other two on the outside, so that larger fire apparatus, rigs, ambulance and some of the larger trucks that you see on the roadway in regards to emergency services can kind of straddle that one middle speed cushion to slow their rigs just as the minimal amount that they need to, so that they can still get to scene as quickly as they can. And if you have any questions about speed cushions, please feel free to stop me at any point. So, what is in our speed cushion policy and procedure? This is the packet that we will give out to a resident who is inquiring on whether or not they want to look into speed cushions for their street or their block. In that packet are, the first part is a frequently asked questions, steps to follow for speed cushion installation, a flow chart, the installation policy and procedures, that's the key part to this process, an appeal process, speed cushion removal procedure, a detail or diagram page, and the last part is the petition form to start the process. So, I'm going to go over just a couple of key points, I apologize for the length, but I want to make sure there's a good understanding of what it's all about for speed cushions in our town. So, page three, how does a resident request speed cushions on their street? Well, page three of that document provides the pathway for residents to apply for speed cushions. Those steps include, one, interested residents complete the attached petition form, which is page ten and eleven of that document. That includes identifying a neighborhood facilitator who will be responsible for facilitating the process between the public works department and the residents of the affected street. Public Works staff will review the completed petition form pursuant to the installation policy and procedures on page five of the document. It's got two paths from that point. If the public works department determines that the request does not meet the minimum criteria for installation, the application will be rejected and the request will no longer be considered. If, on the other hand, it does meet the minimum criteria, the public works representative will work with the neighborhood facilitator to identify the exact location of the proposed speed cushions on the street. Once this task is completed, public works will draft a speed cushion placement diagram of the affected street. So, just to stop there for a moment, some of the things that we concern ourselves with is where on the street it is. We don't want it in the middle of someone's driveway, out on the road in front of their home. We want to try and place it as close as we can to a street light so that the area is well-lit, so people can see it. There's a lot of signage that goes along with it, that'll be part of this and you'll see in the detail page. So, there's a lot that goes into the idea behind the installation of a speed cushion or these traffic calming devices on a street. or these traffic calming devices on a street. So, after that design has been created and approved by the public works department, that request will then be placed on the next regularly scheduled traffic safety committee meeting. If the request is approved, the public works department will work to schedule the installation of speed cushions based on the availability of funding in order of approval. Okay, this is an important part to this process. So, looking back over the months that I have looked at different agencies who have speed cushion, traffic calming policies or procedures for their municipality or for their county, in fact, I looked at twelve different agencies, um, in, in my research on this. And I found a lot of common ideas behind it, and you're seeing them incorporated into this, in this document. So, this is my attempt to be best practices for what I see as beneficial for, they were the common things that I saw in these other agencies, these other communities. I tried to bring them all here, we talked about them, we went back and forth several times, and draft form to what you see here tonight. So, uh, the special note that I want to talk about is, is that we ask people, and we're going to continue to ask them when they take a petition and when they take a packet, that they have to review this packet thoroughly, because speed cushions are not designed to be placed on every street in our community. Having said that, we're going to look at it on a case-by-case basis, but the policy and procedures that start on page five of the document are really the bread and butter of where we want them. Because in my research, I found that you don't want to put them on Pacheco, you don't want to put them on a large, wide street with a larger, I shouldn't say larger, a higher speed limit. Because in that second bullet point there, roadways with speed limits above twenty-five miles an hour are generally designed to provide for the efficient movement of traffic. Installation of speed cushions may interfere with that movement, movement, and the minimum criteria designed to identify those local streets, those ones that have driveways facing it, that are experiencing an actual problem with speeding while providing the city with flexibility in the installation of speed cushions in other sensitive areas. So, I just want to stop there real quick and just make sure that I haven't confused anyone to death, see if you have any questions for me at this point. Okay.
Are you going to go over the, um, A through, uh, page?
Painfully, I am, yes, in the next slide here.
Okay, all right.
So, the next question is, well, what are those minimum requirements or those minimum criteria determine whether a street is eligible for speed cushions? And if you turn to page five of your document, I will try to go through them quickly, I was, as I was sitting in my seat, I started to circle the ones that I thought were more important than others, but then I said, no, they're all really equally important as, as it relates to this process. So, generally speaking, the street or street segment shall be a two-lane road, local street as defined by the City of Los Banos Improvement Standards Policy, where the primary function is to provide access to abutting residences. B is the posted speed limit on the street should not be more than twenty-five miles an hour, and I'm just going to go through these really quick. Seventy percent of the property owners on the affected block must approve the installation. So, we, someone takes a petition form, they go back to their street, and only four of the ten residents are interested in speed cushions, because maybe four of the ten, only, only four of the ten think that there's a problem. That's going to be an issue for us, because these are going to have the most effect, once they are installed, on those people that live on that street. So, we're trying to keep them in mind the most as we go through this process. So, seventy percent of the property owners on the affected street have to approve of the installation. One hundred percent of the property owners immediately adjacent, which is defined by two houses in either direction of the speed cushions, have to approve of the installation. That is because the noise pollution created, the air pollution created by the slowing of the vehicles will be greatest within that range, within those two houses on either side of those speed cushions. So, we want to make sure that those people are, are okay with this process, and, and that they have a say in whether or not they're put right in front of their house. Now, we have some language built into this, that if a hundred percent of them don't, the public works staff will go back and try and rework another solution, and try and find some common ground. But that is a requirement, that a hundred percent of those immediately adjacent to the speed cushions have to, have to approve the installation. So, for vote counting purposes, we have a lot of tenant-occupied homes in Los Banos. We decided to go with the property owners for each property, um, and that's identified by APN, or each, um, assessed parcel number. One APN equals one vote for that block. Fifteen percent of the vehicles traveling on the requested street shall exceed the posted speed limit. So, what this is going to require will be a lot of work from the public works department in the drafting of the diagram, and making sure they meet the obligations of the, these policies and procedures. It's also going to require a traffic survey by a, a law enforcement officer out there for a number of hours to do counts, traffic counts, speed counts, in an unmarked, uh, vehicle. So, fifteen percent of the vehicles traveling on that roadway have to exceed the posted speed limit, and at least ten percent of those vehicles traveling on a requesting street shall exceed the speed limit by at least ten miles an hour. Traffic volumes on the street should be between five hundred and twenty-five hundred vehicles a day. The street or street segment should be at least six hundred feet long. Speed cushions...
Gary?
Yes, sir.
The, yeah. Is there flexibility in traffic volumes? I mean, it seems like, you know, some of these streets that people are speeding on, five hundred cars probably don't go by there in a day.
It's a very good question. In some of these, you will see that there are shalls, and there are shoulds. Now, the, the design behind, the idea behind the speed cushions is to slow a problem street that has some actual speeders. So, we decided to go with a hard and fast shall on the idea that people are actually speeding on the street, not that it's just a perception issue. However, there are a number of them that are defined by should, to give us, give you some flexibility when it comes to the installation, it comes to where, uh, we decide we want to put these. So, there are some, some, um, of these that are mandatory, and there are others that are not mandatory, that we have to meet.
I mean, I can see exceeding, uh, at least fifteen percent of the vehicles, uh, traveling on the requested street shall exceed posted speed limit, and, because that's the reason for the speed bumps. They, they shall exceed the speed limit. And, uh, ten percent, I, I think I can see that, but the volumes are, I mean, I want some leeway there, and, and that's where it says, uh, uh...
Should.
Should.
Yes.
So, and, and so that's subjective, then?
Yes, it can be.
Okay.
Gives us a little bit more flexibility.
And so, for me, it's, and it sounds like public works is going to be doing a lot of the front-end work on this, so I think that that needs to be, um, maybe, you know, expressed to them that, like, because I'm, I'm with the mayor, I, I can think of some of these streets, and, and you know, and without actually sitting out there and counting the cars, it just doesn't seem like, it seems like five hundred cars is a lot of cars to go down a street in a day. Express to the, the frontline folks that are going to take this document in for the first time and tell them, you know, that, that number's, that's what we like to see, but if you just happen to live on a street where it's only two hundred cars that go down it a day, but they're going with all the speed limit, like, that number's just there as a guide, that isn't a, a, a hard, fast number, because I don't, I don't, I don't know how many streets in the City of Los Banos does, gets five hundred cars a day down it.
I know someone here that'll tell you that, that it hits five hundred a day. Colleen in the back here, she's been, she's been one of our closest confidants when it comes to speed cushions, so, they see a lot of traffic on their street in the thirteen hundred block of Quail, so...
And a speed cushion is not a cushion. I mean, it doesn't depress...
No, it is a hard, in our case, it is intended to be a hard asphalt raised surface that, at its midpoint, at its mound, the top of the mound is three inches off the ground.
Three inches?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, Colleen, it doesn't, it doesn't compress.
No, no, no compressing, no compressing. Okay, uh, I think I was at J. The speed cushions should be at least three hundred feet from existing or proposed traffic control devices, should not be located on curves less than three hundred feet in radius. L talks about, um, if it affects emergency response times, that the public works director in conjunction with the affected emergency service department will have input on, on the, on the installation of those speed cushions. Uh, the next one, M talks about traffic diversion. If you're diverting, if the, if our speed cushions divert traffic from one local street because people want to avoid those, so they take another local street to go around them to avoid them, we have to consider that, and we want to make sure, and actually, this was, this was one of the things that I saw in, in a number of the, the, um, different cities that I researched, it's a common thing. People do that all the time, they'll avoid slowing down, and they think by going around, it's going to be much faster. So, we wanted to at least acknowledge that, and if we did determine that there was a, uh, traffic diversion, that we had some loading in place to deal with it effectively. So, we think we reached that there. N is a big one. N is in nor is recognized, however, that special circumstances exist where placement of speed cushions are advantageous. Therefore, areas such as school zones, safe routes to school, pedestrian routes, senior communities, and other areas approved by the traffic safety committee may be considered for speed cushion placement absent the approved elements for installation. So, again, we want to provide, uh, as much flexibility as we can, as we can't answer for every scenario, hard and fast, and, and think about every scenario that's going to be presented to us in the future. And we do think there are special safety-sensitive areas that probably should have a little bit more, I want to say deferral in judgment, but just a little bit more ability to, to perhaps affect some change in that driving behavior, because maybe it is a safe routes to school, maybe it is a senior community.
Okay. I'm not sure about this question, or what the answer would be, but there's a twenty percent contingent fee, or contingency money, uh, that comes in with measure V, and that has to do with kind of green, uh, green pathways, arterials, things like that. Could that money, could these speed cushions fall under that twenty percent realm?
For some of the local funding, um, I think we have to do a little bit more research and come back to, but we think it might be a possibility, yes.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if we could, because, because I don't know if we're...
Perhaps not the alternative modes portion of that local funding, but some, perhaps some of the other funding.
Okay. Because what I'm looking at, if we can access that, because I don't know if we're going to have twenty percent in projects every year. We may for a little while, but if we can access that twenty percent, that saves the other part to do, you know, other things, so, okay, good.
Okay, so, uh, in the event of multiple requests from various neighborhoods, speed cushion requests will be prioritized, and this, this was the, the question surrounding this, is how are we going to prioritize where and who gets a speed cushion first? The easiest, fairest way for us was, um, it will be based on the date and time, a completed speed cushion petition form is received by the public works department. So, um, to be the fairest for everyone in our community, that seemed to be the easiest way. Everyone okay with that? Okay, good so far, excellent.
So, we've given Mark a new title, Speed Cushion Facilitator.
Yes.
Okay.
He's the speed cushion czar. That's why I volunteered to take on the project, because I got to ride it to my Viking, and Mark's been, Mark's been a very good ally in my...
I think now the police can smell the worst part of the...
Yes, and I will take a moment to say that, uh, Tim and Mark were really the, the big movers in this. I have been a proponent of speed cushions for some time, and, um, the thought process behind speed lumps, speed bumps, speed cushions has really changed in the past year or so with, uh, Tim coming in as the fire chief, so, and Mark has been very helpful, as well as the city engineer and the public works director, so, I really appreciate their help on this.
Well, Mrs. Lewis and I encountered a few in Merced the other day, and they were speed bumps all the way across the, the road.
Yeah.
So, if Steve Carrigan can do it, we got to do it.
You know, my research, that was actually provided, those were installed, if it's the street I'm thinking of, those were paid by the residents of that neighborhood. Now, there is, the City of Merced does have a policy similar to this. Uh, that was what I found in some of my research, is that there was a mixed bag of who paid for this, and that was one of the things that we'll talk about, that we had to get through and get, get past, was who's going to pay for speed cushion installations? Um, and you'll see in a moment here that, um, we have an answer for that question. I think we have covered pretty much all of it. Yeah, okay. Okay, moving on. So, just a couple of other questions. I think we might have answered this one, uh, what happens when multiple requests are submitted? We did answer that one. What happens if several requests are approved over the course of more than one fiscal year or in the same fiscal year? The answer to that question is, approved projects will be maintained on a list, and based on their priority or their submission date, they will be, um, completed in order of approval. So, just talk about a little bit, little bit of history on the idea of speed cushions, um, or going back in our review, once we got our draft done, and I think I went through six or seven drafts of, of this through the process, it was reviewed and approved by the city attorney. Once it was, once that was completed, we sent it off to our risk management authority, who doesn't actually approve something like this. All they do is provide recommendations and, uh, make sure that they have the ability for input, if that makes sense. So, we sent our final draft to our RMA, they sent back some suggestions, some recommendations. There was three of them. One of them had to do with the pitch or the, the design of the actual, uh, cushion itself. There was a comment about adding the public works department phone number on there, which I was happy to do. And there was one other one that was fairly minor, um, that was also completed, so I sent back a response to them that said, hey, I've, I understand what you're telling me, we've made those changes, this is how we made them, and they said, okay, we have no further recommendations. And that's about the best approval that they can give us. Uh, so, it's been through our city attorney, it's been through our RMA, and lastly, on the twenty-third, it was, uh, presented to the, the traffic safety committee, and it was approved for your consideration on a vote of four to zero. We had one member that was out that day, it was out of, I think he was out of state, actually. It was out of town, at least. Fiscal impact, how are we going to pay for these? Initially, we debated the idea of whether or not the city was going to fund these, or the residents, uh, asking for the petition were going to pay for them. At the end of the day, the city manager determined that the city will do its best to appropriate twenty thousand dollars a year, based on the availability of funding towards our budget, uh, to complete, um, speed cushion installation. So, when you talk about the installation of it, you've got signage, you've got to do some ripping of the road, or grinding of the road, excuse me. They grind down the road a little bit, and they come in and, and add the, the speed cushion, the raised asphalt mound there. I've seen probably four to five different costs, as low as three thousand dollars, I saw one as high as ten thousand. So, I went high...
The ones three?
Yes, for one set of cushions. And I'll just go ahead and move on to the next one, and this is the last slide. Uh, but this is, hopefully, it's not too confusing, but that top portion where you see the three, that's a, kind of a cross-section of the road. Um, you've got the curb on the left and the curb on the right, in the middle of the roadway, it goes right down the middle of those three cushions. That center cushion, that smaller one of the three in the middle, is designed to allow some of those larger vehicles that we talked about to, um, straddle the cushion as opposed to slowing down like, like it would need to in a speed bump or speed hump. That was one of the things that the RMA had asked us to change, is, it's hard to read in the design, but there's actually a, a degree of slope or a pitch, and we couldn't exceed, I think it was six percent, I think we had sixteen percent, so they asked us to change that to meet more of a national standard for speed cushions, and we did. So, okay, last slide, oh, sorry, councilman, did you have a question?
I thought it's just... On the, back to that slide, if you would, down there on the, it says approximately a seven percent gradient, gradient, right?
Just a comment on two things. The approach, as you approach it, the seven percent was okay, it had to be between five and twelve percent, so we were okay on that. The slope that was changed was the side one, from curb to curb, and it was at twenty-two percent, and they wanted sixteen percent.
Oh, sixteen.
And that's what we changed.
I pause that, that was six.
Thank you.
It will get someone's attention, though?
Yes.
Okay, that's, all right.
If it doesn't, if we see that it's not achieving the effect that we desire, we can come back and adapt that.
Build a wall?
Yes. We have to work with our public safety partners here in the fire department, we need to make sure that they can get to the calls as quickly as they can. So, that's all I have. I apologize for making speed cushions such a long presentation. Uh, we put a lot of effort into this, this went back and forth, uh, between myself, Tim, and Mark, and Stacy, uh, several times over. We called a special traffic safety committee meeting to get it accomplished on the twenty-third, so that we could be here tonight. Uh, we think it's a good product, uh, the good thing is, like everything else, it's, it's a living document. If we find that there's something in the document that we don't like that needs to be changed, we can come back to you and... be changed, we can come back to you and ask for that change.
We're very happy for this presentation. You take your time.
That's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. Mr. Freya.
Chief, do any, do other cities use that 100% requirement of the people adjacent?
Yeah, I don't have a hard and fast count for you of the 12 that I looked at, but yeah, that was not uncommon to have.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, sometimes I wonder if some of the, some of the most frequent speeders are some of the people there and obviously they wouldn't want that cushion. And I'd really like the city to have the authority to build a cushion when we need one, based on our analysis. If we get a complaint, I think it's our responsibility, we get numerous complaints as we have on a number of roads in town, I think it's our responsibility to place someone there as we plan to do and analyze that. And if we need a speed cushion there, you know, we need a speed cushion there, just like we need a stop sign. I don't think we should have to, I don't think we should have to worry about whether 100 people, percent of the people next to that speed cushion want it there or not because if we need it, we need it. And I think we're in charge of the streets. We're in charge of the street. We have eminent domain on the streets.
Yeah.
And because of that, I think it's, and the safety of our people is the most important thing in this case. You know, I'm a big private property rights guy, but on this issue, the streets, I think we may be able to have control of those. Now, I do see some, the contingency you have there and later on. I just think that the process seems to be cumbersome to get it done. Some of those streets need it done now.
Yeah, generally speaking, though, we don't look at speed cushions as something that we're going to go out and deploy it around town on our own. This was always going to be something that was driven by the residents of that particular neighborhood who lived on the street the most. So, I never really envisioned a scenario where, I mean, we talked about it, I shouldn't say that, where we'd have the main culprit on the street being the individuals whose house in front of, we want to install cushions, if that makes sense. So, this was always designed to be an add-on to the roadway and never to be something designed into it unless we do it in perhaps a new development. So, the biggest desire behind it and what I found most frequently was that in order to be successful, they needed to have the residents of that neighborhood approval of it. So, that's why we went with the-
And I'd like to see with future developments, look at where we should include speed cushions and do that.
You know, now more than ever, I think I speak for my partners over to my right, they all are very willing and interested in traffic calming measures being put into new development.
Very good.
So, we're really, really taking a close look at traffic calming scenarios with some of the new developments that we're getting. We went a number of years and didn't have any growth, so we didn't see a lot of that. We're starting to see that again. That's one of the main things that we're looking at is some of the traffic designs of those developments.
Great.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I don't, I don't want to take the air out of the balloon in the room. This is a, this is something that the Fire Department previously had put a kibosh to for obvious reasons. The vehicle code actually says that the Fire Chief has the final determination on traffic calming in neighborhoods. And the Fire Department has always taken the approach that we weren't going to allow these in neighborhoods because of the damaged apparatus, the delay in ambulance responses, the delay in police responses. As a police chief and a city council, they receive complaints for speeding in neighborhoods daily. I could see where this is the magic bullet to where you'd want to deploy them all over the city of Los Bannas. But keep in mind that when you do deploy these, there is a delay in life-saving resources on a daily basis. We've designed these so that fire trucks will straddle them, but ambulances can't. They're not as wide as fire trucks. So, when you have a patient in the back of an ambulance whose lives depend on them getting to a hospital in a very quick response time, keep in mind, these cushions could quite possibly delay that. So, I am still not supportive of putting speed cushions on every street in the city of Los Bannas. However, I am understanding to a point where some neighborhoods that get impacted by growth around them, that didn't experience that when they first moved there and moved into a neighborhood, and all of a sudden you've got hundreds of cars speeding down their block. I see where deploying these is an obvious solution to fixing that problem. But I'm still not convinced that designing new neighborhoods around speed cushions is the answer. I think that developers and traffic plans can solve speeding problems in new developments. But this is a resource to address obvious problems that need a solution. So, I, I'm not 100% behind speed bumps, but I see that sometimes they could be deployed to solve a problem. So, I just, I thought I should say that so that as a council, you don't think, well, the Fire Department changed their mind completely and now we can put these on, we should be putting these on every block. It will save the complaints that Gary has to deal with and that you will have to deal with, but there will and quite possibly could be a delay in life-saving response times because of these. So, just keep that in your mind, please.
I hope in new and future developments-
Mike?
That new and future developments, that we do use traffic calming other than a speed bump with not a straight drag strip, like's been the, yeah, what's happened in the past. So, I think that that's one way that all of you can have input in to help us solve that problem for new residences. You know, I, Chief, I think you're exactly right. And I think every day, I think all of us up here, I hope I'm speaking for the entire council, that, you know, we get these phone calls and we say, okay, how much, what weighs the other? If we slow someone down and they don't get an accident, and then someone who needs a life-saving measure. I mean, it's all a balancing act. And we're not going to make everyone happy, but I'm hoping that this is a living document as Chief Breezy says. And we'll weigh out the good, weigh out the good and bad and see if we can, you know, come up with something that's going to help all the residences. But I appreciate your comments. They are well-received and thank you. Okay. Mr. Freya, do you have any more comments?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments as well. And yeah, traffic calming takes a number of different forms. Right now, the cushions going after these streets that were built without, whether they were extended without, you know, people realize, we have a long straight stretch of road without a stop sign, and if it's wide, people don't speed on it. You know, I live on a corner of one. So, you can't have too many, but you got, there are some streets in Los Bannas that absolutely have something slow them down. And in the future, we design the place so, we design with the developers and we set our design standards so that we don't have this problem anymore. So, use a little forethought. Thanks.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just mention-
Yes, go ahead.
Tim has been very, the Fire Chief has been very consistent in his message. And it's not been lost on any of us. My stance has been if, because I don't have the resources available to deploy people on every street, this is just a tool for us to help minimize that complaint. But I completely understand where the Fire Chief's coming from. And that's why I've been, we've been very appreciative of the fact that he has bent to the degree he has. Like we talked, we don't plan on seeing these on every single street in town. However, I think like the council member said, there's an opportunity. So, we're going to, we're going to be reasonable with our deployment of them. It's going to be a staff-wide decision. It won't be just mine, it won't be just Tim's, it'll be the entire Traffic Safety Committees.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis, you're first.
Yes. Chief, thank you for the presentation. And to our Fire Chief, thank you for your concerns and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to work together and find a common ground. I do have a lot of questions, so just bear with me as I-
Sure, no problem.
-read through this. The first thing I want to ask, based on what's in the report, the $20,000 from the fiscal budget, is that going to be immediately coming out to do these speed cushions? Or are we going to be waiting for Measure V money to come in?
Very good question. Sonya and I actually talked about this a few weeks ago and initially I thought, man, I need to get that money in there right now. There's really no rush to get that funding in there because this is a very lengthy process to do the public work side of it, to do the survey side of it, to do the diagramming of it, to get it approved is a several-month process, especially at the onset of it. So, I think in this case, no, that there's no, there's no need for immediate funding tonight. I think with the adopted budget for, adopted budget for '17, '18, I think we'll be plenty soon enough for us to get our first one hopefully over the hump and approved and in a position to where hopefully in the month of July, if Mark has the staffing and we can get it accomplished, we can pull the trigger perhaps on our first one in the early fiscal year.
But in the future, are we going to be using Measure V money to do these speed cushions?
That is, that was a question, that was a topic of conversation, and I think that is still yet to be determined. I think potentially, yes, it very well could be. I don't want to sit before you tonight, though, and say that it is.
Okay. I was only able to download some information, well, actually, two cities that I was able to locate it on. I did find 12, so your research was a lot more extensive than mine. One of the cities that I downloaded and they had access on their website was Manteca. The other was Stockton. And I think they both made reference to their half a percent sales tax that was passed by the citizens. And Stockton sets aside $25,000 a year for neighborhood traffic calming, but they also do it according to districts. And the reason I'm saying this is that I know it's, even with them, it's a first-come, first-served basis. I would like to see and make sure that every district within our city now that we are in districts is going to have equal access to that money. And because, you know, one part of a community gets their applications in very quickly, it leaves out everyone else. And so, to me, it's kind of important to make sure that everyone within the city of Los Bannas has equal access within the four districts. And then once, you know, we start catching up with people making requests, then it should ease up a little bit better. But that's one of my concerns, is just to make sure that each district within the city of Los Bannas on a first-come, first-served basis has equal access to that money as we move forward. The questions that I've written down, I just went straight to, starting with the speed cushion policy. So, that's how I'm going to run through my questions. And the first is on page two. I think you answered one of them, and that's slow response time. You talked about that as it's one of the drawbacks. But you also, there's also in the report about noise increase. Could you elaborate a little bit on that to me? Because I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking if a car has to slow down, to me, that's less noise than one that's just speeding straight through a street at a high volume.
Yeah. You see it at stop signs. It's a fairly common occurrence. It's the, it's the deceleration, the braking noise that you get, and then it's the acceleration noise that you get as opposed to that car being past your home or past you and that in a, instead of a one-second timeframe, it's now three to four because it's got to slow down to either stop and then re-accelerate. And then you've got sometimes people playing music, and so you've got music noise and some of that ambient noise that goes on. You've got some people who have modified exhausts that contribute to noise pollution. So, the idea behind that was as opposed to someone driving by your house at 35 miles an hour and the noise associated with that, we think there's a greater occurrence of noise because they have to slow down, stop, and then re-accelerate.
Well, 35 miles an hour, for me, that would be a nice noise. Mostly in my neighborhood, it's like 45 and 50 miles an hour in a 35 zone. So, the noise is a lot greater. There's also indication in here that for, you talk about in, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, bullet point number four on page two, all streets are not suitable for speed cushions. And there's reference made in here, for instance, streets defined as arterial and collector are one that is a main emergency access street for neighborhoods, which are not suitable for speed. Now, I did speak to the director of the program in Stockton. She was kind enough to call me back today. They don't do arterial, you know, which I pulled the definition up for arterial streets, but they do do collector. And I'm not sure how many collector streets we have here in Los Bannas, but streets that are 25 miles or, you know, which is the average speed of what a residential street should be. I'm not, you know, I don't know what the statistics are in our city of people speeding on those type of streets, but we do have some neighborhoods like the Andersons, 4 and 5, who had the real narrow streets engineered back when that was kind of the thing for design, where a speed cushion would take up the whole street because you can barely get a vehicle through there when you have people parked on both sides of the street. It's just almost impossible. You can't get two cars pass each other at the same time. Somebody has to pull over and let another vehicle by. So, those streets, I guess I don't really see them as issues and problems. There's certain parts of our town that don't have speeding issues and problems in them. But, you know, I'm not sure which streets are arterial in our city. I would assume 7th going into Stone, Stone, what is it, Stone Creek or Stonewood is arterial. I Street is an arterial. But those streets are also over 25 miles an hour, and those streets have houses fronting them. So, you're leaving out a good portion of your residents in those neighborhoods who have issues and problems with speeding that this policy is making ineligible for them to even apply for this process. So, I'm real concerned. Arterials, I understand because they lead out to freeways, but collectors, you know, we're not a big, major metropolitan city where we could be affected by something like that. I think we need to include collectors in this policy so that some of those neighborhoods where they have speeding problems on collector streets can also benefit from this policy.
Yeah. So, those are very good points. And if I can call your attention to page five for those minimum criteria, number, excuse me, A does talk about a two-lane street defined as a local street by our improvement standards where the primary function is to provide access to abutting residences. Engineering judgment will be used while making a decision as to the exact function of that street. Now, if you go down to the next one, we talked earlier about the shoulds versus shalls. What this provides us with the opportunity to do is if there's driveways budding up to that road and perhaps the road speed limit is higher than 25, that's where we are kind of conflicted in the idea of what are we attempting to accomplish? Are we attempting to accomplish the efficient movement of vehicles from point A to point B, which I think there is some need for in our community? And you have to weigh that to those residences and the residents for those streets who live on that street. So, I think we've added a little bit of flexibility so that not only are we talking about the homes that have, or the streets that have homes abutting them, but we also didn't make it a shall for the 25 so we can look at it on a case-by-case basis. We made it one of those should qualifiers, if that makes sense.
Okay. So, what about the collector, the arterial collector language?
You know, it, that is, that's a little bit more difficult for me to answer right now. The design for speed cushions is to address speeding on residential streets. On arterial roads, I wish Stacy was here tonight. I don't have an example. I could see maybe Ortega Liga being an arterial. I can see portions of West I being an arterial road, just based on the design of it. But again, that's where we brought in and allowed for flexibility in the plan-
See, I thought, I thought a road was designated an arterial from one end to the other. I didn't know that it would be cut off in sections.
From intersection to intersection.
Well, like you brought up I Street, it starts on Pacheco Boulevard on the, on the east end, it goes around and it- It goes around, and it comes back out at the west end of, of Pacheco Boulevard. So it was always my understanding with the planning department that, that whole street was considered an arterial road because it took you to a collector.
Yeah.
I mean, it, that was a collector which took you, took you to an arterial.
Right. And that's why we tried not to, in, in my drafting of this, we tried not to be too specific on what we could and what we couldn't, because we knew there are going to be scenarios that we couldn't address in the write-up of the policy or the procedure that answered 100% of the questions. So the design is that we're trying to decrease the articulable speeding on residential streets. And obviously, you've pointed out a couple of conditions or opportunities where you've got wider streets, but you still have residences on them. So we tried to plan in a little bit of flexibility so that we can look at it, look at the petition on a case-by-case basis. I think one of the problems we will run into is on some of those streets that are higher speed limits exist, where they, where we've got 35 miles an hour speed limits. I think we will run into a problem with the deployment of speed cushions on those streets because the goal is to, like I mentioned, effectively, efficiently move that traffic from point A to point B. So again, I, I think the best answer that I can give tonight is that we tried to build in some flexibility so that we can look at as many different variables or options as we can, as long as we can cover the fact that we're trying to keep speeding in our residential neighborhoods down.
Mark, do you have a comment?
Just one, just one comment. If, if you go to page three, and it's item A, it's the first one, that it shall be a two-lane local street, there's also a sentence at the end of that about engineering judgment will be used while making a decision of the exact function of the street. We have a lot of streets across functionary local collector. It's, it's, it's not cut and dried. It really isn't.
So there, there's nothing in state law or?
No, I'm going, I'm doing just, if you go just by our standards and our traffic model and our Los Bannos general plan, all of them, they just really refer to the standards and it's based on a volume. So I'm saying we have a lot, and, and the same volume is for whether it's a local residential, minor collector, or a minor collector with parking. It has the same volume top limit. So we, when, when some of these homes are fronting on collectors, I think that's a case where we have to look at that individually. It's, that's not a cut and dry case at all. That's something we have to look at because you get kind of a hybrid type of a street. And that's when, when it comes to our department, I start taking a look, that's when I sit down with Gary and Tim and say, you know, this street's a little different. You know, they have, they have reasons. I think the speed is, is more the issue on a street like that because you can't speed, whatever they are, humps, bumps, whatever, on a 35 actually is a little bit dangerous. The speed has to be down. But I'm saying the actual category of the street, you can categorize, categorize the street any way you want, but how it actually functions is, is what we're really going to be looking at. I mean, local streets, the, the obvious what they are. On I Street, it obviously has a lot of local street characteristics. I mean, I would never say it doesn't. So that would probably, if that come in, have to be looked at a little different than just, it's not like, oh, that's listed as a collector, we're not, we're not going to look at it. No, because that has a lot of locals hybrids to it that we'd have to look at and see if, if there's something we could do with it, if, if there's a way to work it out. So I'm not saying, it's, that's not just cut and dry. That's why the engineering judgment's there, because we do have some hybrid streets. There's, there's no, we do. And so you, you can't dodge it. They have this, they have problems with people backing into them. We realize that it can't be just, you can't, can't just make this solution black and white. There's a lot of gray, and we'll be looking at the gray.
Okay. I'll see if I can lump some of these together. Well, when we talked about what about my neighborhood and having 70% of the people in the neighborhood agreeing to the application process, and that 100% of the owners have to agree to where the cushion is to be placed. I guess I, you know, with that one paragraph, one sentence that was referred back to about the engineering judgment, and also on page six, you have, what is it? H, I, J, and K, which refer to what the city would like to see in traffic and speed and where things are being placed. It, it's almost like there's some predetermination here about how this cushion is, where it's going to go. And I, I think, at least in my opinion, having to put the onus on the backs of residents to determine an engineering safety issue, calculating the distance of where a cushion should be for the most optimum use in that neighborhood, to me, that, that's a little bit scary. And you, you can have every owner wanting to not deny having a cushion in front of their house either north, south, east, west on the street. And with that, you'll end up getting, you know, the, the facilitator has to go around and find someone else on the street to do it. And then if they can't find someone, it's like a, a open gate for the application to be denied. And I, I'd much rather see that, since the city, you know, has these engineering things that it has to look at, to just outright determine, you know, if the, the residents agree that they want this speed bump, is to say, okay, these are the distances that, you know, has to be from the start of stop of the street, and it can't be here, there, and the other. So the most likely place to put it is here. I, I just, you know, I, I don't want to see this fail for our city. And to me, that, that kind of leaves the door open for failure for a community when the onus is put on them to, to determine where that, that speed cushion is going to be.
Yeah. So what I've read in, in some of my research is that they, speed cushions do have an impact on the local residents on that block or in that area where they're installed. I think what we have designed here addresses exactly what you're talking about. So the goal with the neighborhood facilitator is primarily to help us collect the addresses, to be our conduit to the community. If we need to call a meeting, or someone from my staff or Mark's staff needs to go out and go, hey, guys, okay, it's time to move to the point where we're going to put them somewhere. Now, let's find out where we want to put them. These are the general guidelines that we want to do that, but that'll, that'll be determined and accomplished by public work staff and not the neighborhood facilitator or anyone on that block. These are just the general guidelines that we want to follow when we're putting them out. For example, we don't want to put them within 100 feet of a stop sign, an existing stop sign, because eh, that's really not going to be as effectual as, as worth, mid-block might be. So these are more guidelines for us and where we want to put them because we have to have some standards for this. But all of that work that you're referring to will be accomplished by staff. The neighborhood facilitator just accomplishes really page 11 and 12 in that form, saying that they do agree to having the installation occur. That's the biggest part of this process for the, for the neighborhood, the group, the, the residents, theirs. They just need, and this form is very common. Ours is a little bit different because all of them had an approve, a disapprove, and name and address, and some of them just had a, if by signing or agreeing, signing your name to this, you agree to having them installed in front of your home. We just put a little box here, just, we want to make sure it's very transparent to everyone. But the neighborhood facilitator is really only interested in page 11 and page 12. They submit that completed form back to us. We take it from there. And then when we go back out to the, to the neighborhood, we work with them on where to put it, because like we talked about, you don't want to put it in the middle of somebody's driveway. You don't want to put it in the darker spot of the street, though sometimes that might occur. It might not be right next to a, a street light, even though that's probably the best place for it, for safety reasons. So I hope that answers the question, but that's exactly what we're intending to have happen, is put the onus and the workload on staff to get this accomplished. They're, they're just helping us facilitate this. They're just helping us make sure that they're okay with us putting it there.
So on page five, where it says, in cases where you don't have that 100% property owner allowing a speed cushion to be in front of their property, this will not, the, the street will not be eligible for a speed cushion installation. And, and see, that's, that's, that's kind of the point where I'm getting to. And I really do want to see the city work with the community to help them affect this. There was also language in here, if my memory serves me correctly, that if others, you know, people have a tendency to, let's see, what is it called? There's a term for it, where they start taking off into other communities to avoid these speed cushions. So there may be some surrounding streets within the neighborhood where that might happen, where people start diverting and going another way. And those people are unhappy because this street now has a speed cushion and it's affecting their neighborhood. So the facilitator has to go out and start another process within those streets surrounding where the cushions are proposed.
If it is identified as a problem, yes.
Okay.
Because you don't want to divert traffic from my street onto your street because I got speed cushions. I, we don't, we didn't think that was fair. And actually, that's not terribly uncommon in some of the other research that I did with some of the other agencies. I, I think that's a very, it's a, seems like a sound concept from my research on the topic.
So in, in some of the research that I did, once they receive signatures from the requister, the street that wants the cushions, what the city does is they have a community meeting of the surrounding streets and explain what's going on and how it could or could not affect their neighborhood. So again, you know, I, I want to see us be proactive on, on things like that rather than saying, okay, now you've caused a problem in your neighborhood and these other people are unhappy. Let's get the other people in on the game up front and talk to them so that everybody's on board and they know what the, the plan is to try to rectify speeding within that community, not just one street. So, you know, it, it's just kind of my solution of, of maybe not having this problem happen where you, you've got a facilitator now that's got to go out and, and fix a problem because they had a problem on their street. I think it's incumbent upon us as a city to make sure that everyone in that area has a, a stake in what's getting ready to happen. Because it, it's going to affect them unless it's a, you know, streets that kind of intersect and it's, it's not going out to a main arterial or collector street. So that, that's just one of the suggestions that I would like to see happen, is that when you're working with the facilitators, maybe talk to the residents or maybe invite them into the meeting so that they can see how this is going to affect their community based on information from Public Works and the Police Department.
Is it possible, just on D, to add, if determined that public safety is a factor, Police Department shall have authority to install speed bumps, speed cushions, even if they didn't get 100%?
Where? Did you say?
D, the star. If 100% of the property owners living immediately adjacent, unless 100% of the property owners living immediately adjacent to the speed cushions concur, the street will not be eligible.
Yeah. So this is all, take you back to the design of this. This is all driven by the residents of this, of this particular community.
Yeah.
For the installation of this. They've got to want it to be in their neighborhood because I think what, I think what you'll find is that if they don't want them, if they're not for them, they're not going to come to us and ask us to do that. So this is really driven by the neighborhood who desires to have this extra traffic calming device installed on their street. This isn't a common, normal device that we've used in our toolbox of traffic calming devices. So we're trying, we're trying to let it really be driven by the residents of that street. Now, when you talk about 70%, I saw, I think I saw one this afternoon that said 67% of the residents on the street had to approve of the speed cushion installation or the speed bump installation. So I saw variables in, in the number or the percentage of people who needed to, to approve this. We sat on 70% because it seemed to be reasonable. We didn't want it to be too low because if two neighbors come in and say, ah, there's a traffic problem, but the other 15 or 20 are really not for it, our, our goal is to make this neighborhood happy with the installation of these.
So at no time, you want it where PD is going to step in and say, I think we need those here?
No, not at this point. No. No.
I think.
No, because again, it's, it's, this is driven by the neighborhood. Now, if we see a safety issue, we're going to obviously take steps to address that, whether it be through enforcement or some other design. But this is an extra add-on traffic calming device that we're really letting be, it's guided by and driven by the neighborhood's desire to have a device like this installed, as opposed to us just coming in going, we're putting it right there whether you like it or not.
I, I think probably more suggestions is what I was considering, because if you've got residents that are kind of squeamish and they may not know, maybe helping them to make that decision is kind of what I'm leaning to, not saying hard fast, this is where it's going to be, whether you like it or not.
No, there'll be conversations between the neighborhood and, and the Police Department, for sure, and the, and Public Works Department. We're, we're not just going to take this form, walk away from them, and leave them high and dry. There's, there's a lot that's going to go on between the time we receive this form and, and the time this is all settled and done.
Yeah, but I want to burden this so much that, that people, they think they're going to get these traffic calming devices, and, and if they put a petition in, it's going to be a year before those, those cushions go in. I mean, I hope the process is, I'm, I'm a little bit worried that the process is going to take so much time that, that people are going to get discouraged. So what do you view as the, the time once you get going on this?
A traffic survey can be completed in a day. I hate to be overly optimistic, but I think two to three months might be a reasonable. It depends on Mark's resources. It depends on a contractor coming in. It depends on weather variables. If it's the middle of winter, we're not going to do it. I think the weather's got to be in the 60s in order to have asphalt work properly.
And, and the way that we see this, too, is this will be a contracted-out improvement. Streets are wait, are kind of busy with everything else we do right now, so most of the times it's going to be contracted. I think your delay point is going to be the funding. We're going to take 20,000 to start with, and that can come out of gas taxes. If Measure V doesn't cover it, then Measure V will cover something that the gas tax of that would have covered. We'll take it out of gas tax. We, we carry a, a healthy one-year surplus in the street fund in order to, to do that. So if it's not Measure V money, it'll be gas tax money, and Measure V money will supplement whatever we took it from the gas tax, because.
If, if the measure will allow that to be done.
Well, the measure does, the measure does allow maintenance, too, though. I mean, there's a lot of things that we, there's a lot of things we do with the gas tax that that measure would allow, I'm sure.
I just want the special portion of it to be used, because that's more money.
But, but we, we will have that funding. I don't think that's an issue, but the issue with the 20,000, because we could easily, easily go through that with two or three requests a year. So that's, and I think what we'll see is probably, you know, I'm just estimating six to 10 the first year, and we'll have two or three years kind of built up unless we fund more.
But two to three months is not out of the question? Is that, if you, if the funding is available?
To break ground is probably three, three and a half months in that area, because we do have to, you know, it's, it's enough of, it's a small enough contract. We could do through three verbal bids on this, so it's quicker. That's not out of the question, no.
Okay.
The one good thing, but it is, it is kind of dependent on the winter. We can't, we can't get adhesion in the winter.
Yeah. Given good weather, given the funding.
Well, one of the things that, that Gary did here that was really good on this petition form, he actually has everyone say, are you, is it okay if you have it next to, you know, your house? So going in, we're not going to just say here, okay, the people 50 feet away from that stop sign want it, and they approve it, so it's going to go there. It's going to be based on our design, but we'll have some indication here if everyone approved it. And we definitely will let them all see the design. We're not going to just jump out there one day and do it. And we will talk to them. If there's some, some people said no, and it's the best location, we'll, we'll talk to them. We did talk to several people that lived on, I think it was in Stockton. Was it Stockton? I, Stockton, Tracy? Tracy, we talked to several people on blocks that had these, especially right where the cushions, and it was an issue with a little bit of noise and that's what their issue, but they did like the slowing of the speed. So it was a compromise for that particular person. We did talk to some of the actual people that were there.
That's good.
I think we hit Stockton, but we, did we hit Stockton? I've got some pictures of us looking at speed cushions if anybody wants to see it, but we did go out and research this in this process.
And you should have had those for your overhead presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
So with that, what I'm hearing is that you will be working with the resident on the design of the cushion and how it goes in the street.
Yeah, before, and I don't mean to cut you off, before it goes to the Traffic Safety Committee, the Public Works Department will work with the neighborhood facilitator who is tasked with maybe calling a meeting together where we get together and we go, okay, guys, this is the design we have, this is where we're going to put it. And it might be as easy as a 10-minute conversation. So the goal is communication with the residents that are involved in this process from beginning to end. Sure, that's important to us.
Okay, well, again, my biggest concerns are making sure that we work with the community to help that process move forward. And just in your research, Chief, did you find that most cities took the approval process back to their safety committees or, you know, if people met the minimum standard based on what Public Works is looking for, the Police Department and in the policy, that you just moved forward with the process?
Yeah, I saw a number of different options in that regard. The reason we have it for the Traffic Safety Committee is by ordinance. The Traffic Safety Committee is kind of the ultimate deciding group or committee for traffic-related issues on the streets of Los Banos. So, and that was another thing that we built in that I didn't really mention was there's an appeal process. So if at the time the Public Works Department says, ah, no, we don't think you qualify for speed cushions, the person has the opportunity to appeal. If they don't like what the Traffic Safety Committee says, they have an opportunity to appeal that. So we really, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate Mark and Tim's help on this. This is a really big step forward for me. I get what Tim says, I want to be respectful of that, and we're not going to go out and bathe the city of Los Banos with speed cushions, though that might be my ultimate goal. It's not reasonable whatsoever. So we're going to be very cautious and we're going to look at these on a case-by-case basis and be very reasonable with them.
When the application is being filled out and there's a request for the APN number, is the city going to get that information?
The city has the ability to confirm all the information with APN numbers, I think.
Okay. Well, I think I've presented my concerns. A couple of other things that I would like to make sure that we do is that when this policy is passed, that we immediately start working on getting that general information up on the website so people know where to go to and understand clearly what the expectation is of the city to apply for the speed cushions. And again, I'm going to refer back to Stockton and Manteca. They, I was able to find it very clearly on the Public Works website. Other cities that I went to, it was kind of amazed to try to figure it out and I couldn't figure it out. So I'd like that to be visible and simple for the public to be able to gather that information.
I'll be glad to put it on the Public Works page tomorrow.
I'm sure you will. One of the things that I, I know we've done this on other ordinances that we pass because this is such a new process, is to maybe after we get the first years of money from Measure V and we've been into this for a while, just to bring it back from a report to see how it's working for the city and if there's any adjustments that Public Works or the Police Department would like to make or status quo or however. And also, let's see, I think I mentioned about the distribution of assets based on our districts in Los Banos. I'm not sure how that would work. That would probably be, what, about five grand for each district, which may not work out right now based on the fact that you said a cushion could be anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000?
Three to 10, yeah.
Three to 10.
That's what I'm seeing in the estimates. The idea that you have...
Is that for both sides of the road or just one side of the road?
That's one set of three.
One set of three, okay.
That goes all the way across from curb to curb.
Make a deal for a few at a time. You know, and I think, I think what we should do is when the first application comes in, see how, just how long it takes for that first application and get a timeline from when the application is received till the actual speed cushions go in. And that could be our first barometer. Okay, anything else, Mr. Lewis?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, Ms. Silvira?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, one for Mark. Mark, how does this affect repaving of the streets? You know, I know we did the chip seal, would you just, would you have to seal over that and then repaint lines? I mean, I know that's further down the road, but at some point you're going to do some maintenance on those streets.
If the installation is in good shape, we probably wouldn't even seal it so we don't have to paint it. But if it isn't, yes, it just, we get sealed and we repaint it.
Okay. And then you answered my question, who will do the installation and so that you guys would, you would contract that out?
Yeah, I'd like to get our crews to do one or two of these.
We would probably contract it out to start with, yes.
Okay. And then, Gary, did you have any, like, could you give any indication as to why the discrepancy? Why is one potentially 3,000 and is as high as 10,000? That just seems like a big gap. I mean, we're talking about a street that's only so wide.
Yeah.
And we're putting a cushion that by the schematics that you gave us is pretty, and so, and add on to that question, I know that I've seen it where they have those plastic ones, where they're not, they're not made out of the asphalt, they're actually the plastic ones. Was that taken into consideration?
It was. We actually went and looked at some, on our field trip, we looked at the plastic ones. I think the desire is to have a more permanent solution because the plastic has a potential to break and come up out of the ground because the ones that we saw, if I recall correctly, they're hardened rubber and then they're just anchored down with three or four bolts. And it just didn't seem to be a long-lasting solution.
Okay.
On your costs, I think the low range, and I can't verify, just by looking at the cost difference, I think the low range is materials and city staff doing it versus contracting out for a little wider one. I don't know how a contractor could do it for three. I could see four or five, but I think that's really a material cost that maybe the city's doing.
Okay.
That's all I could think of the difference would be.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. So just a couple of quick comments is that, I think you got the right approach. I don't think that this is going to be a widespread deal. I think there's a few areas that are, that this is really going to affect and those people are going to be the first ones in line to get this taken care of because we've been talking to some of those same people since I've been on council over the years and they're constantly concerned with it. And I agree with Fire Chief wholeheartedly on this, is that this is, this is to fix some of those problem areas. This isn't for city-wide use. It's just, it's not feasible and it's not desirable. So I think you guys are taking the right approach. I think you built just enough flexibility into your ordinance and I appreciate all the time that you, because you gave some allowances in there, you know, if there is a special circumstance that you guys could use that. So I think you guys did a really good job with it and I'm fine with passing the resolution as you guys submitted it. I do agree with, I don't know who made the comment, either Mrs. Lewis or the mayor did, is, you know, let's just revisit it in a year, let's just see how we're doing. And that's all I have, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so after Colleen turns in her first application...
Tomorrow morning in 8:02.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
You think?
Yeah, then you can tell me the timeline of the first one and how long it takes to get it done.
I understand there is one of these petitions already being...
Okay. And if we stay within the three, three and a half month level, I think that's, that's a good range. That's a good range. Okay. Tim?
Just one quick comment, Mayor. It sounded like a couple of council members were concerned that maybe if the city determined that a speed cushion was needed in an area that we wouldn't do it because the property owners didn't bring it forward. I believe that if something out of the ordinary happens to where a neighborhood is impacted by a traffic safety problem, our Traffic Safety Committee is going to evaluate it. And if we determine that a speed cushion is something that would solve that problem, even though, I guess I want to say is, this doesn't take any authority away from the city. If we determine that something has to be done in a certain area and it needs to be done fast, we own those streets. If the Traffic Safety Committee agrees, we'll do it to address a safety hazard to save somebody's life.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
We're not taking authorization from the city. If it comes down to we want to do something, we're going to do it.
Okay.
I would think that the rest of the Traffic Safety Committee would agree with me on that.
Yes, and that's, and that's the function of the Traffic Safety Committee. It's based solely on the fact of a petition submitted by residents and their desire to have them there. I haven't, I haven't seen a situation in my time in, with this department where that has occurred, but yeah, Tim's...
You don't give up your bag of tricks, though?
Yeah, no, no, this doesn't do that. This doesn't do that.
All right, okay. That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
This just talks about the petition in regards to installation based on the residents' submittal of a petition. I confused that one hard enough.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on this if there are no other questions. And also, before I do that, I'd like to also encourage the public, as you're moving forward, to request petitions to have these speed cushions installed in your neighborhood. Please contact your surrounding street neighborhoods and invite them in. Don't just do it singly by yourself for your street. It will help the city in the long run to help with any issues that you may have on your street as well as the one that's submitting the petition and the application. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Council Resolution Number 5884, adopting the City of Los Banos' speed cushion policy and procedure. And also to add, bringing back the policy and procedure for review within a year to council members.
Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Freya with the add-on of bringing it back within a year for review. I hope the petition process is shorter than this discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carrie. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Again, we'll get right back here. Okay, let's start back up again. Item 10, Consideration to Approval of City Council Resolution Number 5845, authorizing the city's support of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce in the development of a certified farmer's market and amending the 2016-2017 budget by increasing the community and economic development expenditures in an amount of $1,215. And we're going to our city manager. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to go to Mr. Freya first.
Mr. Mayor, I have to respectfully recuse myself as this is, this item involves the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce and my wife's the executive director there, and therefore it creates a conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, no, I can't, I have to wait till he leaves. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to the Chamber staff and Vice President and Mr. Shasky for hanging in there with us. Appreciate that, appreciate that. Hopefully this item won't be as long as speed cushions. So... Okay, so staff's been working with Chamber of Commerce staff on a farmer's market and special event for the downtown. So what we've come up with is a certified farmer's market operated by Shasky Farms and a craft fair with baked goods and other food items, a beer garden with entertainment and mobile food vendors along H Street. Oops. Did I go the wrong way? There we go. So what we're proposing this evening is this event be held on Tuesday evenings from 4:30 to 9:00 at Henry Miller Plaza from June 6, 2017 through September 5. The farmer's market portion of the event will require a city permit and the craft fair slash beer garden portion of the event will also require a city permit. The farmer's market permit will be applied for by Shasky Farms and the event, other event portion of it will be applied for by the Chamber of Commerce. Let's see, I think we all know what the plaza looks like, but just wanted to give an idea of the plaza and what it might look like with some special event tents, canopies lined up for the event. Oh, darn it. I'm being challenged. So this is just a couple of pictures of what we would hope this would end up looking like. Just grab these off the web, thanks, Chief. I think these are from San Luis Obispo. I would hope it would be this successful. I don't know if it will be, but again, would definitely hope this would be as successful as that particular event. Up in the top photo, you'll see some entertainment. And then the bottom photo is just a photo of some of the farmer's market vendors. Again, more photos of what we hope this event will look like. I do think we need to be reasonable in our expectations of the event, but fingers crossed and hoping we could pull off a very successful event here in Los Banos. In terms of what the city's portion of the cost of pulling off an event like this would be, at least in 1617, we've estimated about $1,200 for a police officer and for the rental of a portable restroom. In fiscal year 1718, we're estimating about $3,100, again, for police officer support and a portable restroom. We would hope that the goal, that the event would be self-sustaining at some point in the future, which means there's enough revenue coming into the chamber to cover these costs. And again, that would be a goal. I would hope that we'd be able to get there at some point. So that would be a goal for the event. Doesn't really include this in the staff report, but we would recommend coming back to the council, I would say by at some point in November, to report on the event and just provide an update to the council on what I would hope would be a very successful event series. So again, I was hoping my presentation didn't take as long as speed cushions and I don't think it did. So there's a recommendation, I'm not going to read it. I know the Chamber folks and Mr. Shasky are here and did want to make some comments, so if it's okay with the mayor, I would turn it over to them.
Okay, let me ask the council, do we have any comments from council this time? Okay, so let's open the public portion. Bertha, if you'd like to come up?
I just wrote a little prepared background here on what's been going on. As Los Banos continues to grow in size and stature, we continue to look for new ways to improve our quality of life, so necessary not only to foster the enjoyment of our present residents, but also to attract new businesses and activities to our town. A farmer's market provides an economic boost to local businesses, access to fresh local foodstuffs, free local entertainment, and an excuse to enjoy one of our town's crown jewels, Henry Miller Plaza. What better way to draw our community and perhaps our neighbors and nearby communities who otherwise might not come to Los Banos at all, but while they are here, may stay for shopping or dining? Consumers walk to farmer's market for two main reasons. The wide selection of fresh, affordable produce and specialty foods and the opportunity to gather with friends in a relaxed, fun environment. Over the past few years, we've had some farmer's markets, but with limited success. They were small with a small number of vendors and selection. They were also not held in our downtown... They were also not held in our downtown area, which is essentially the heart of Los Banos. We now have the opportunity with this potential partnership to bring a farmer's market to our town, along with the chamber's special event with the potential to grow in quantity and quality of vendors and entertainment. We ask that you support this endeavor. Your vote is the most genuine way to stay true to shop local. It is our hope the city council will approve the resolution before you tonight, and by doing so, you are supporting the independent, free-spirited farmers, processors, artisans, and musicians who will bring a farmer's market to life every week in our community. Your support will make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or not in favor of a farmer's
Hello again. I wanted to come from just kind of a personal background to start. I have seen two startup farmer's markets turn into completely just have blossomed. I grew up on an island up in Washington that had about 13,000 people on it. And when I started growing up, there was absolutely no farmer's markets, nothing. When I was in high school, they started one down on the port, and it probably had five vendors. By the time I graduated high school, four years later, it was our whole entire old town, downtown, which was about 20 blocks worth. So, very small community. I know you guys are thinking it's on an island. We are very connected to mainland. We have a lot of berries up there in that area. But farmer-market-wise, for a 14,000-person town, that worked great. And the community that came around and just kids coming together with adults and families, it was an awesome time growing up. I then came to Chico, California, which is a whole different part of the world than western Washington, and that's about 100,000-person community. When I started there, they had about one farmer's market a week during the summer. When I left three years later, they had Tuesday, Thursday nights in the summer and every single Saturday for the whole entire year, farmer-market-wise. I know we've probably all in this room been to farmer's markets. I currently go to one in Turlock and go to one in Fresno. I live closer to the Dos Palos area, so fresh produce doesn't come in grocery stores as often as I would like when it comes to eating healthier. And having to drive an hour to go to a farmer's market, that I am not supporting my local community that's, you know, within just a 10-to-20-minute driving area, I prefer to just stay local and stay in Los Banos, as we all try to. When it comes to just being Los Banos and not talking from the background, I think this is a way for the chamber to get involved with the community and not just our business members. It's a way for us to branch out. I also believe it's just a very positive thing for our community that will help try to keep people local when it comes to just produce, maybe going out to eat that night instead of going, you know, maybe to Turlock to a restaurant, and they're going to come to the farmer's market and see if they can find a local vendor that has something that they usually wouldn't be eating. I think it also helps bring all the associations and businesses, different communities in Los Banos together as a whole, instead of just going to their own association for that month or that week. I also just believe we're in a small town. We are growing. I think it would be a great part to grow into a farmer's market and to help it just make this community a better place for all of us to live. And that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
As I said earlier, my name's Adam Shasky. I know a lot of you, some of you I don't. I don't know how many you're familiar, but we've actually had two farmer's markets going at this place once before, or twice before, rather, down at Pacheco Park. And, you know, it was one of those deals, I don't think it was the right venue for it. You know, we did okay, but, you know, there were some issues we dealt with. You know, traffic was a little bit tough, there wasn't much parking. And I think the other thing is, is that I think the community is evolving. You know, I was raised here for 10 years, you know, graduated from high school here back in 1990 with Kim. And anyway, you know, whether we want to admit it or not, you know, you guys have a significant population that's commuters, and, you know, they're city people for the most part. I think they're looking for something to do. And I think, you know, having a late afternoon into an evening market, I think that would be good for your community, and I think it would be better for the market as well. You know, when we were approached about coming back here to do a market, we were kind of hesitant a little bit, just because the other ones hadn't worked out that good. You know, we just didn't kind of get the support. But I think with this new venue and, you know, kind of change in direction with it, I think it would be something that would really work out well and be good for everybody. That's kind of all I had to say. Just wanted to come over and show of support, and we're really looking forward to working with everybody, if you guys are willing to take it on.
Thank you so much. Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, Adam, really quick, how many vendors do you expect to have? I mean, you guys, if you can come back to the microphone, please.
Yeah, you know, it all kind of depends on, you know, what kind of support we get. I mean, I think we could start out somewhere at eight to 10, you know, but I mean, it's, you know, it just takes time, you know. We've got to, you know, basically, nobody's going to come if they don't make money is what it comes down to. You know, I mean, we go to eight markets a week right now during the summertime, and, you know, this one, like I said, for whatever reason, you know, there's been years it's been good for us, and then there's been other years it hasn't been, you know. And so, I mean, you get to a certain point, you know, you've got to kind of cut your losses where, you know, you're not making money, it's not worth the effort to put it out. So, you know, I think with this, you know, the new, doing it at night where you're going to get some more extra people, I'm pretty positive about it. I think it's, you know, it's got a good chance of being very successful. And, you know, same old thing, you know, once people start showing up, you know, there's going to be more and more people want to come in, you know.
So then, you said eight to 10, you said you do eight a week now?
Yeah.
So on this Tuesday night that we're proposing here, do you have any...
We don't, we don't. So it fits in very well. I mean, I was very optimistic about it when they said about doing Tuesday night. We do, right now, we do three on Wednesday, we do two on Friday, and we do two on Saturday. And we had a couple, we went to Modesto for a while and kind of backed out of that one just because there was too much competition, basically weren't making enough money to justify, you know, that cost outlay, so. But, you know, like I said, Los Banos is kind of a, you know, it's kind of a second home, you know, because I grew up here for a few years, and, you know, we always liked the area and got a lot of friends and, you know, people here we like to come see and support the town, so.
Okay, so this is like, so these are some, I'm going to just lay it out there, some of my concerns that I have is, I think it's, when you look at it and you look at our budget expenditure for one year, and then you add for the next budget year, which starts in July, we're going to spend, we have, we're slated to spend $4,365. And so, and it's going to come out of our economic development money, money that we've programmed for economic development. And I think it's a good use of the money. I think that for the reasons that Bertha just talked about earlier, if we establish something down there, it's a weekly thing, it draws people downtown, they're going to come and get their produce, and maybe they go visit some of the restaurants downtown, maybe they go visit some of the shops, and, you know, those people are all very smart people down there, and they probably keep their doors open a little bit later so you can go shop in the little boutiques. So I think it's a good idea. But for me, I want to see, you know, I want, we're definitely, and I appreciate that the city manager is going to bring it back, because I want, you know, what's the timeline? What are the benchmarks? We're going to, to help get this deal, because that's the goal, is that we're going to plant, we're going to put some seed money out there, hopefully get to a point where you establish a market. So in your opinion, how long do you think it takes before it's self-sufficient where you're able to pay for those restrooms and pay for that, where that market, the whole, and I mean, it's not just you, obviously, because you have the chamber that has a part in this, before you guys become successful enough that you're able to pay those costs?
You know, it's kind of hard to answer that question, but I mean, I would think, you know, I mean, if everything goes well, I mean, optimistically, I would think, you know, maybe three years. I mean, at least, you know, cover the bathrooms, I don't know about the police force presence and that kind of stuff, but, you know, it didn't look like it was too much. And I mean, the other thing is, too, when I say eight or nine vendors, I'm talking, you know, the certified part of the market, which is all your fruits and vegetables, you know. I'm not sure how many of the non-certified products you're going to have there, whether it's, you know, I mean, they got people selling flowers and, you know, homemade woodcraft and, you know, there's a lot of different aspects to it, you know. I mean, like I said, when we went to Modesto, I mean, they had all kinds of stuff there. People are selling, you know, restaurants come down and sell bread and pastries and, you know, all kinds of different stuff that's being considered non-certified. So this kind of depends on how big you guys are willing to let it get, really, is what it comes down to, you know.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And then, my next question would be, is for, I'm going to guess, Mark, that you're going to get the answer to this one, is on the restrooms, and I did talk to Alex, but I just want to, so one of the questions that was asked of me is, what about these restrooms, these portable restrooms? What are we going to do with them on the other days that you're not there? And it seems like for now, we're going to go with the approach of, you know, because I'm worried about, are they going to get vandalized? Are they, you know, are we going to have issues with them? So I guess it's more of a comment to you is, is that we're going to go and just kind of see what happens, but we need to have a plan in place that if, if it does become a problem, then I don't know what, that might involve Public Works locating and relocating them.
I mean, if it becomes a problem, we'll address it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for right now, Mr. Freya, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. I just have one question. I don't know if city manager can answer this or Sonia, but we're going to be putting up a front money for, you know, a certain period of time for this farmer's market to operate. Who does the money go to? Does it go to the chamber or does it go to Mr. Shasky?
Well, the costs are for the rental of a portable restroom, so we'll be paying, likely paying the invoice directly for that restroom. And the other portion of the cost is for police services, so I don't know if we'll be just absorbing the cost or making an interfund transfer, but we won't be making any payment to either Mr. Shasky or the chamber.
Okay, okay. So then, with the hopes that, you know, this project can fund itself within maybe two to three years, is there some sort of accountability to the city for us to know what, financially, how it's being sustained, or if they can do it on their own?
In three years, I would hope we'd be able to come up with that, that plan. Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And then, I would assume he's only going to be responsible for the certified portion of this flea market. If you'd like to come back up, sir, maybe you can answer this for me. You're only responsible for the certified portion?
Yeah, you know, we would only, we would only manage the certified part of the market. The rest would be up to the chamber.
So the non-certified for the crafters and things like that?
Yeah.
Is that going to be the chamber's responsibility?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, the chamber's responsibility.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, someone make a motion, quick. Okay. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5845 as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos to approve City Council Resolution Number 5845. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Congratulations. Really excited about this. All right, let's go on to appointment of commissioners to the following commissions. Airport Advisory Commission. Oh, we have to get Tom back here. We've reopened the speed cushion issue.
Oh, good. I mean, it's not even 10 yet.
Okay, all right. Let's go on to item 11, appointment of commissioners to the following city commissions. Airport Advisory Commission, one vacancy. And for that, I'd like to thank Mr. Freya and Mark Fatchen for sitting in on the interviews. And I would bring forth the name of Annette Stichel. And so that would be my motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Lewis to bring forth the name of Annette Stichel for the Airport Advisory Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies, and I'd like to bring forth the names of Rula Oxaball and Rhonda Harper. And again, thank you to Mrs. Lewis, and thank you to Mr. Fatchen for the, Director Fatchen for the interview assistance. So that's my motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Freya. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Advising of public notices, no reports. City managers report. Alex?
Attended the homeless summit recently, I think that was February 17th, with a contingent of other city employees, the mayor and council member Johnson Santos. I think the mayor and council member Johnson Santos may have some comments on the homeless summit, so I'll leave it to you folks. I did want to congratulate the mayor on his recent appointment as chair of MCAG. I think that is a good appointment for the city and looking forward to working with MCAG and the new chair of that board. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Veronica Johnson Santos.
I'd like to first off by thanking Parks and Rec for their, the completion of their basketball season. It was very nice. I went to a lot of the games, and I thought it was, I thought it was great. Second, I would like to also talk a little bit about the homeless summit. While there are, initially, our, the count was done the end of January in all of Merced County, and it was just a bit saddening to see that our counts went up by 25 here in Los Banos. So I just wanted to put that out there and just hope that in the future, near future, that we can help bring those numbers down. And that's all I have to say about that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, this Friday, March 3, is Arbor Day, and this year it's going to be held at the Alvera Park at 4 o'clock, so I'd like to invite the public to come out for Arbor Day. And there will be Arbor Day breakfast, as usual, at the Milliken, Miller Lux Building. The cost is $8, and I believe it starts at either 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning. So the community is welcome to come out and enjoy that breakfast. I would like to thank our staff for the budget information. It was a lot to have to do and revise, but you always do an excellent job, especially in the PERS situation. I remember when I retired from public service with Santa Clara County, it was one of the questions that I asked, because there was concern about the PERS financial status at that point. And the PERS staff out of Sacramento just said, oh, well, if we don't have enough money, we just go to the taxpayers and they'll take care of it. And that seems to be the status quo as to how they move forward in getting their money when they don't manage it properly. So, thank you to the staff for what you've done as far as our budget is concerned. And if I board the community this evening with the cushion ordinance, well, I think it's a really important thing, and I'm glad our chief and our staff were patient with me, and to the rest of our council, take a breath. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I took a breath. Okay, Mrs. Silveira?
Just a couple of things I have tonight, Mayor. On tomorrow, tomorrow morning I get to go to, I want to thank Francine Baker, she invited me to come over to Mercy Springs Elementary to read some Dr. Seuss books tomorrow, so I'm pretty excited about that. It's the first time I've been asked since I've been on council, I'm pretty stoked. The other thing is, you have until 11:59 tonight to enter your livestock animals at the May Day Fair. The entry deadline is tonight at 11:59, so in case you're watching this and you haven't and you forgot, you still have time to be able to do that. I spent, it's nothing like, you know, I sit on the fairboard and there's nothing like procrastination, waiting until the last day to enter them, and that was me today, helping my kids get their animals entered. Then also coming up on March 11, is the Spring Classic. It is a spinoff from the Ken Anderson Memorial Golf Tournament. It's a really nice event here in town. I think it's all sold out, and it raises money for a good cause, it raises money for American Cancer Society, as well as the Los Banos Arts Council. So I'm pretty excited about being a part of that, and that's all I have.
And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, you know what, I did want to bring up one more thing. This is, it's just kind of food for thought. RTIF, yeah, the favorite word, RTIF. One of my concerns, and I would like staff to look a little more into this and maybe get back to us with some information, I'm not asking for a council member request, just when the gentleman was here last month and he talked about the RTIF, what he did say, what I took from his conversation was that if one group was not in favor of it, it was dead. So meaning, meaning one of the cities wasn't, didn't want to be a part of it, or the county didn't want to be a part of it, it was dead for everybody. So with that being said, I know how I feel about it. And if it's going to be the same exact plan as we had before, I can tell you right now, I'm not in favor of it. Unless that plan had something, and I know that MCAG authorized, they spent $40,000 to do a study to come up with a new program, unless that new program has a way that, similar to what Measure V did, where money that was collected in a local jurisdiction had to be spent in that jurisdiction. Unless that new plan has something in there, and I'm thinking more, I'm thinking like 70% of the money should be spent, that was, should be spent in its local jurisdiction and 30, you know, because I am, and I do want to be a regional partner and help out, you know, the other folks in the region, and I probably willing to, you know, sacrifice and go down to maybe like a 60-40 split. But unless that is part of this new $40,000 plan that we have, I can tell you, I'm done with it. We passed Measure V, we are now a self-help county, and I just don't want to waste a bunch of people's time and I don't want a bunch of people to go through the process of having presentations, getting this all presented to them, and then, you know, and I can only speak for myself because I'm only one of five votes up here, but if I read the tea leaves well, and I'm pretty decent at that, I can tell you that unless RTIF has some serious changes to it, I don't see it passing out of Los Banas. And so I don't want to be blamed for everybody, oh, we went through this whole process, everybody had to go look at it, and then it comes to here and then we do what we think is the right thing for our community and our constituents, and then now we get the blame for it not passing. So I'm just saying, hey, why not get out in the front of this deal? And if we know that there's no real changes to it, then there's no sense of us even having any further discussions, because I'm about fed up to here with RTIF, because we've been talking about it since I got elected before I got elected, the elected officials up here were talking about it. And it just doesn't seem that it really worked out for Los Banas too well. That's, so if staff can, if we can get some better answers as to the all in, it's all or nothing, everybody's in or we're not doing it, and if we already kind of know, well, at least I know, I'm putting it out there, I already kind of know how I feel about it, that we will, so we don't want to have to waste anybody else's time. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Freya?
Not too much tonight, announced in Los Banas High School. Drama is doing Your Good Man Charlie Brown, March 16th and 17th. I'm working with them with the music, going to be a nice play for everybody, bring their children out, families, a lot of singable songs. And it's, they're working very hard and they're doing a very good job. So get a chance to get out there, it'd be great. Also Friday Arbor Day breakfast and the Arbor Day celebration in the afternoon. It's one of those great community events Los Banas has. We have, I think, one of the biggest Arbor Day celebrations I've ever seen. It's a community, community event, anytime there's a community event, Los Banas is always out there because we like our community. So how great, we can enjoy all the good things to happen.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to be real brief on some of these because this is not agendized, but as far as the RTIF is concerned, Mr. Silveira, I've asked our City Manager to now go to MCAG and get us some answers. I had a conversation with him last night and he is going to do some investigation, basically based on what you spoke about. So we're all concerned about this and we'll, if we have to, we'll agendize it and bring back all the answers. So we stay out of trouble and the city attorney doesn't get the cattle prod out for me. Okay, so now, and Mrs. Santos, I've asked for a presentation of the, a homeless presentation and to see what services are available for the March 15th meeting. And someone will be coming from Merced and they will be, they will be talking to us about homeless services in the county and what we can do and how we can direct people. Now, as far as the numbers going up, I think it was, I think it was 16 though, just we, I think it was about 16 people. But what happened was, they had a kind of a homeless contingent outside of town in the county. And I heard that that was broken up, so, and then some people were flooded out when the creek rose. So I think that's probably why some of the increases that we saw in the numbers, because now they've come to Los Banas and they were counted in the Los Banas numbers. So I've spoken to the chief and actually the chief came up with this scenario before I even thought about it, and it sounds, it sounds sound that as to why our numbers went up a little bit. But still, what we want to do is, we want to bring someone here to discuss all the homeless services and everyone can listen, so if we can get more people off the street, that would be great. You know, if someone's homeless and they need a place to live and we can try and find them, one, that's great. But if someone doesn't accept our services, then they're just being vagrants. And some of them are causing problems here in town and we can't have that. Someone wants services and truly does not want to be homeless, we can, we can, we can find a way to help them. But if they don't want to accept our services and that's their lifestyle that they choose, then we need to find a way to get them off the street or tell them that we're not going to accept bad behavior. MCAG, the, is in the process right now of outlining projects in priority as referenced by Measure V that just passed. So we are going to be working in the next few months to identify a system and how we're going to identify projects. Now, we've all known for a long time, and this council has, has in many forms brought forth why we feel that 152 is not only a safety hazard, but is also an air quality issue. And that's going to have to be addressed, because my understanding that in these proposals and how they're going to identify projects, it's basically going to be that an air quality project moves to the beginning and a safety issue moves to the beginning or the top of the list. So we're going to have to see how our project is identified. And, and someone's going to have to tell us and tell this council that 152 is not a safety issue and 152 is not an air quality issue. So I'm not going to say anymore because it's not an agendized item, so we will have more information later on. I would ask the chief if he could come up for just a second and please give us an update on 152 and 11th Street?
I can. So there has been a lot of discussion, conversation on social media websites with the school district, us, some of you in regards to the crosswalk at 11th Street in Pacheco. I can tell you that back in October of last year, we engaged Caltrans in a conversation and have been doing so since then, very regularly. I am here to report to you tonight that we have a, we've had a very good response from them and the person that they assigned in their Division 10 group here, which we are in Division 10 of Caltrans, to work with us on that issue. I will not speak for them to tell you that there is any hard and fast changes coming other than to say, I know that they see and hear some of the social media buzz that has gone on with the crow and one of my fellow high school buddies along with Adam, Vince, about some of those things that have been said on social media. I have forwarded them to Stacy, the young lady that we've been working with. I just don't want to commit to what the changes are or when they'll be installed because that is a Caltrans issue solely based on their judgment, their revenue, their funding. But I can tell you that I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're going to see some changes to that crosswalk in the near future, and I know that they've committed to a longer term solution in regards to that. Since I have you, I will tell you that we met with Caltrans today, the Public Works Director, myself and the, oh my God, am I going too long again?
Well, that's okay, I didn't see his hands yet, hurry up.
Oh, and the city manager. Talked today with the PIO for District 10, and they're starting on Monday on the new HAWK system at Mercy Springs at Scripps for the new school. That's been something that we've talked about, I think back when I was intern, last time we went to a school board meeting and discussed with them our partnership that we wanted to get. That's actually coming to fruition, that's going to start, apparently Caltrans has a contractor that's going to do work out on Henry Miller Mercy Springs, along with this. As long as weather holds, it'll start Monday. And so between now and Monday, I'm going to work with the Caltrans District 10 PIO and we're going to come out with some information, a press release, so we can talk about Scripps Mercy Springs and we can talk about.
11th?
Yeah, 11th of Pacheco.
Okay.
And what the HAWK system is about.
Okay.
Did I pass an hour yet?
No, no, I think you're okay.
Am I okay?
All right, yeah, but you have to end it.
Does anybody have any questions? You put me in front of a microphone, I like to talk, sorry.
The attorney's fidgeting, okay.
No, he's always.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the city manager. All right, well, well, yeah, no, no, I understand. We're done. Okay. So thank you, and I think what we'll do is, if we need to discuss any of these issues, I think what we'll do is agendize them for informational only and as we get more updates on anything, so then that way, maybe we can have an agenda item that talks about an MCAG report that I could give every month based on that or something else so we could, we could stay within the correct bounds. Okay, so with that, anyone else want to talk? Okay, with that, I would adjourn the meeting at 10:05.